Good evening and welcome to the December 17th meeting of the Milton Planning Board. Today is the 13th meeting of fiscal 2016. I'm going to have the members introduce themselves. My name is Emily Ennis, I'm the Chair.
Alex Whiteside, member.
Michael Kelly, member.
Tim Czerwinski, Assistant Town Planner.
Brian Furze, member.
Cheryl Togias, member.
I'm going to run through the agenda for tonight's meeting. We are going to do approval, or at least discussion of approval of minutes, at the end of the meeting. Our next meeting dates are January 5th for the public hearing on the articles for the special town meeting in February, and also our discussion and vote on any articles we may put forward for May, and the discussion of, continued discussion for the process for the remainder of 2016. Our next meeting after that is, our regularly scheduled planning board meeting is the 21st. We have been invited to meet with the planning, with the Board of Selectment on the 5th of the 12th, I believe it is the 12th, just waiting for confirmation. We have the special town meeting on February 8th, and then our two planning board meetings for February are the 11th and the 25th. And given that we're, the 11th is the same week as the 8th, the special town meeting, we can look as we get closer and see what is on our agenda for that week.
Sorry, did you say February?
11th and 25th.
And 25th.
Those are our regularly scheduled dates.
And you said, and this is January 5th and 7th, is that right?
5th or 7th. So 5th is a special hearing, and the 7th is if it snows sufficiently on the 5th that we have to cancel.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, the timeline, the timeline was so tight that we didn't want to lose a week. And then I'll be presenting, and I believe Alex will be presenting to the warrant committee on the 4th, and I will present the results of our special hearing to the warrant committee on the 11, of our public hearing, rather, on the 11th. We're going to have citizens speak tonight. There's no new business. We have a continued definitive subdivision plan, and just to let you know that Paul Sullivan then will not be here, so we're going to open it and then continue it to the 21st. Then we're going to move to the deliberation of the conditions on Thayer Nursery, and just run through the final draft. We will be holding a vote on that tonight. And finally, we'll be going through the zoning articles for February, well, one of the articles. I had to make some executive decisions over the weekend and give you, I want to give you an update on that, and then talk a little bit about 2016, so. And the planning board budget is the other thing to talk about. So we are going to move into citizens speak at this point. Are there any citizens who wish to address the board? Yes, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
John Rowe, 23 Parkland Drive.
Welcome.
I'd like to talk a little bit about zoning enforcement here in the town of Milton, and to let the board know that the building inspector is currently investigating zoning violations at Thayer Nursery. And Thayer Nursery has prohibited the building commissioner from entering their property. This Thayer Nursery prohibited the town from entering the property in November, and the town still has not taken them to Quincy District Court to get a court order to allow them to enter the property. So I believe the town of Milton is complicit in the situation. The Thayer Nursery is applying for a special permit to allow them to operate a landscaping business, snowplow operation, as well as a firewood distribution business in a residential zone. And we have a situation where the town has no way to enforce the conditions of the special permit. Thayer has a history of noncompliance, and now we're in a situation where the town has evidence of noncompliance, but their hands are tied. Well, they're complicit because they don't go to Quincy District Court to get a court order to allow them on the property. So I think everybody in town should be extremely concerned about the town's ability to enforce zoning, not only at Thayer, across the whole, the whole town. If, if people do not allow government officials, town government officials, who are charged with enforcing zoning laws in the town of Milton, do not allow them on the property to investigate, and the town does not take these people to Quincy District Court to get a court order, I'm afraid that, you know, there'll be no enforcement, and when there's no enforcement, we know there's no compliance.
Thank you very much. Are there any other citizens who wish to speak tonight? Okay, so just to address that, that's actually one of the issues that's going to be coming up in the discussion of the final conditions on the special permit, so thank you for bringing that forward. And obviously, that's, the public hearing on that part is closed, but you are, of course, welcome to stay and listen to the board's discussion on that. So we are going to open the continued public hearing on the definitive subdivision plan for 33 to 41 Pleasant Street. This is continued from November 23rd, and my understanding is that nobody is here to speak tonight to that.
Right.
So we are going to continue that to January 21st, which is...
The engineers are still working on the, on the drainage information that the board requested.
Great. And just to let you all know that I have requested from planning staff that nothing else happened on the 5th, other than our discussion of zoning articles, that that meeting be reserved for that, so. Alex, you had a comment?
I think that you've got to get Paul Sullivan to deal with this right-of-way. The right-of-way may or may not exist, but it isn't a street. If he wants to get frontage on the right-of-way, he's got to develop it into a street. It's only 30 feet wide, which is 20 feet less than our requirement, and it's how many hundreds of feet long?
I don't know, but it is hundreds of feet.
But it's over 5, well over 500 feet. I think that, in my view at least, it's nigh on to impossible to think that we would ever approve this as a new street, with the 30-foot wide right-of-way, and the sort of improvements which he's talking about, which would be minimal.
What you were...
But he's got to, if he comes in just showing this thing on a right-of-way, he can't get his, in my view, he can't get the plan approved because Lot 9 will not be a buildable lot. He can, if he comes in with a plan saying not a buildable lot, fine, but he has a problem.
I concur. You got a letter by email from Matthew Gaines, who's an attorney for Marcus, Arico, Amer, and Brooks.
And this is what you've just handed me?
That's what I just handed you. The official came today.
Okay.
But that letter is actually made out to Coastal Building Solutions. That isn't the applicant that's before us. The applicant before us is Celebrity Realty LLC.
Okay.
So he did it by email that he corrected himself, he being Matthew Gaines. So I have both letters, which both will go into the jacket, and the bottom line to the whole thing is, since 41 Pleasant Street is located near the end of the right-of-way, the owner of 41 Pleasant Street has the right to use the entire length of the right-of-way, per Ms. Gaines. Mr. Zuzula has absolutely no legal right, whatever, and he says, finally, since the right-of-way may simply be a paper road at this time, the owner of 41 Pleasant Street has rights to improve the entire length of the right-of-way, thus making it a way for purposes of the town's bylaw. They said they would put unbuildable on their plan. I think unbuildable does go on their plan, but the cost of a road going back hundreds of feet, the width of the road being only 30 feet, and it doesn't meet any of our standards, and the potential for other development coming from Mr. Zuzula's different parcels that he owns up on that same, adjacent to this right-of-way, it becomes a bigger issue, and I don't see this board giving, giving the waiver for the width of the road for one house that far up.
And if he did, he still has to design, I mean, he can go out, he can go out and improve his right-of-way, but the fact of the matter is that where he's claiming frontage is nothing that exists, so it is not a way that was in existence in 1938.
So am I hearing...
Therefore, he better, better, when he comes in next, this has to be resolved.
Am I hearing from you, Bill, that he is planning to resolve it by putting that it's an unbuildable lot on Lot 9?
They're just going to mark it as unbuild...
So they are not going to come forward with a proposal?
Alex and I have both been on the issue of that. This is not a buildable lot, because it has no frontage.
And do they agree, and are they going to fix that?
They've agreed to put unbuildable on it. They don't agree with our opinion, and they feel that this letter supposedly fixes that.
So are they going to appeal it? Well, they can appeal it. Okay, so that, that will do it. Have them just do it and say, go, go to Superior Court. You go to Superior Court when you don't have a case. Otherwise, you go to the land court, because they know something about land.
Good to know. Since we started discussion on this, is there anybody, I should ask if there's any member of the public who wishes to speak on 33 to 41 Pleasant Street? And seeing none, I'm going to suggest that we've got a motion on the table already to continue it to January 21st. Do we have anything else on the agenda for January 21st at this point?
Not as far as I know.
Okay, so let's put it on for 7:15 on the 21st.
I had a, do you want to, is there, do you guys have to vote on that?
Well, we have, we don't really have to vote on it, but...
I just had a question, because I know for, for the zoning public hearing, you know, we had the opportunity, because it's a fresh public hearing...
Right.
To put like a snow day in there.
Yes.
Is there any mechanism for continuing the public hearing to say like, if something happens on the 21st, we can do...
If you announce it.
Yes.
If you, you, you can just announce it and say, with a, with a rain date of blah blah.
I would say that what we should probably do, given the winter, and given our experience, is coming, winter's coming, I feel like I'm wearing Game of Thrones or something, and given our experience last year, that what we should probably do is say, continue to January 21st at 7:15, and if we have to cancel that meeting because of inclement weather, then to the next regularly scheduled planning board meeting at 7:15. I think that would probably cover it in that case, because we did, we have run into this issue, although it was solar panels rather than snow.
Do we know, I mean, we know what the next...
We all, yeah, we do know, as a matter of fact, it's February 11th.
We could just say that.
Yeah, that would be interesting.
The next regularly scheduled one is a rain date or snow date.
Yeah, exactly. So then, January...
Next regularly scheduled, we better, in the case we do a substitute meeting.
But in this case, we have the meeting, so let's do it as February 11th. If we have to cancel due to snow. Okay. All righty, so, in that case, 7:15 on January 21st. If we have to cancel January 21st because of inclement weather, it will be 7:15 on February 11th. All good with that?
At 7:15.
So, 7:15 in both cases. All right. Next on our agenda is the continued deliberation of the draft special permit and site plan approval for Thayer Nursery. So, as we left it last time, we had gone through it line by line, and Tim's going to bring it up in a minute, and I will move out of the way. I met with town council Tuesday morning, had a two-and-a-half hour discussion on this and the zoning, made the changes and sent them over to Tim. You should all have seen them. I'm just going to walk you through the changes and the implications, and then we're going to, I think Tim has flagged an issue that has come up in the meantime. I've got another issue that has come up in the meantime on enforcement, and we're just going to go through that. And the idea is that at the end of the meeting, we will have a clean copy, we will have a vote, whether for or against. If it's for, we have a signature page that we can sign tonight, because the signature page was kept separate. If it's against, then we don't have to sign the signature page. So, Tim, you're going to bring it up? Let me walk you through, okay. So, can everybody see, I'm not blocking anything? All right, first change, you'll see it throughout. There were some minor typographical changes. I did a scrub, there will probably be at least one typo still in there, because there's always one typo in every final document. But the first thing is applicant was changed to applicants at the request of town council, and you'll see that change throughout.
Do you have any reason for doing that?
Yes, because there...
Other than, other than do a lot of make-work?
Nope. Well, it's, it's easy to do a find and replace, but there are three applicants, and so you felt that it should be...
I understand that. Initially, we said it was, the three were called applicant, and that was perfectly reasonable, but...
I am passing on what he asked.
I'm sure, I'm sure that he has a reason. I was just wondering if he gave the reason. It was because there are three applicants, and he thinks that's cool and is good.
And I should say, when I, when I say that I met with town council, I should specify that I met with John Flynn, who is the town council, and with Lauren Galvin as well, so. There were some minor, actually, if you go to page four, Tim, yes?
Are these all reflected in the clean copy? Do I need to make...
These are all reflected in the clean copy.
So we can just look at this, I don't have to worry about it.
Yes. No, what I did was I did those changes, and then I created a clean copy by accepting all of them, so. On page four, I just want to call attention to, go up some. Keep going up. Sorry, it's page four of this document. It's E, 2E is where I need you to be.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, there, there's a little bit further up, and you're good. Okay, stop, 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 go down. You actually, you actually just had it, that was my fault, sorry. 2E, okay, stop there. So you will see at the, right above where it says various terms and conditions, oh, you don't have the, are you sure you have the right one? There's a change on that that should be...
I have the one that you need, this is, whatever that file...
Well, then I missed that. See where you have paragraph 10? Put parentheses D after the number 10. So that's the other thing, I may have missed that one, I put it in there. So that is, although I've got it crossed off, now let's make sure we've got the right file. I've got crossed off, there needs a change. Can you do on the photograph, still?
Yeah.
That's from my photograph?
No, this is from, what you...
Open up the...
So this is...
...time, please. I need to have students that accept it. Sorry, guys, just take a second.
This is your photograph, don't worry.
Nope, you have the right one, that was my fault. Let's go back to yours and keep it clean, okay, so then that just needs to be... All right. So we had to do some renumbering on the paragraph 10, and so throughout, and we'll just do a double check as we go through, when we get to review required records, it's now 10D, it used to be 10C Roman numeral I. So you will see that throughout there, that is just a technical change. Okay, so then the next, and there's some other numbering changes in there that you should have spotted. I'm not going to go through every numbering change, or technical change. So the next big thing is I, 4I, 4I, which is the list of business activities at F.D. Hours. So site has been changed to property, that was my change, because we refer to it as property throughout, so I think this was the only time we used site, so it needed to be there. And loading of firewood, if you go to the firewood plan, don't, you don't have to do it now, but if you go to the firewood plan, those hours, the hours in the firewood plan are the same as the loading and use of noisy equipment, and town council just asked that in the table of hours, we just pulled that out, basically. So, next, big item...
Does that conflict with the hand loading of firewood?
Should not, but that's one of the items that Tim flagged, so when we get there, let's talk about that, and we could go back and change that, so.
I don't think that it's, needs to be changed.
Okay. So my, so, Tim, do you want to go to firewood plan next? And that way, we can talk about the issue that you brought up, so it's key, 4P. Town council did not have any changes in this section, but Tim, and I had a discussion about it, he flagged it out of the conversation with Maggie, so, Tim, if you want to present the question for the board?
It's just basically, and, and we have, we have to be up in here to clarify if, if we need to. But sort of the, the loading into a customer's automobile or pickup truck may occur on any day during regular business hours. So this is under the firewood plan, this is under loading of firewood.
So P3.
Right.
Yeah.
So loading into a customer's automobile or pickup truck may occur on any day during regular business hours. But then there are restrictions on the times of loading of firewood, including on Sunday, where it says loading of firewood is not allowed.
There are no P4. So this last sentence of P4 says, "All firewood delivered on Sunday shall be either loaded by equipment on Saturday or be loaded by hand." So there became a question here with firewood as to this idea of loading into a customer's automobile or pickup, especially, you know, are we going to require it by hand on a Sunday, which seemed to be our intent at the time? And then the other question that came up was the consistency with the sale of materials.
Right. And there's, there's also the issue, I mean, it's connected to 7A5, which is loading and unloading of materials, all loading and unloading of materials, so it takes place within the landcare yard from 7:00 to Friday, 9:00 to 5:00 on Saturday, and not allowed on Sunday. Again, sort of not really addressing the loading and unloading by hand of if someone rolls up their pickup truck and wants to buy some mulch from a nursery, for instance.
Right. So the discussion that Tim and I had was the loading and unloading of materials that are restricted in this paragraph, A5, 7A5, relate to the materials being sold by the landscaping company. Materials being sold by the nursery come under that 10 to 3 restriction on a Sunday. So we wanted to make sure that everybody was clear, and the language was clear, as to what exactly could be loaded when. The applicant had raised this as a question, so we're bringing up where these different parts are to see if anybody has changes that they would suggest, or if you're satisfied with the language as yours.
You could add to the, where we started with this on...
On the firewood?
Triple I, you could add to loading into a customer's automobile or pickup truck, you could add by hand.
By hand.
I think my, my understanding of the intent, excuse me, Alex, sorry. My, my, my understanding of the intent was that the loading dealt with noisy equipment.
Okay.
Loading hours dealt with noisy equipment.
Okay. So then, the loading into a customer's automobile or pickup truck may occur on any day during regular business hours, and we'll need a period at the end of the sentence, I told you I'd find a time for it too, that that seems to be in conflict with the noisy materials. Do we need to specify, I mean, it's, it's specified that firewood delivered on a Sunday shall be loaded by hand in the next paragraph in P4. Do we need to specify in P3 that if we're loading it in, if it's being loaded into customer's automobile or pickup truck, it has to be loaded by hand on Sunday? That's the question.
Well, there's no, is there a, if, if...
No prohibition of a sale of firewood, is there?
There's no prohibition of a sale of firewood, it's just the use of...
It's all related to delivery.
And the use of noisy equipment.
Understood.
Yeah.
But if you're not delivering firewood, then the implication to me would be that if someone buys firewood and they want it loaded into their car...
Yeah.
On a Sunday, that's obviously allowed, because it's not a delivery. And if it's not used by, if you're not loading it with a bobcat, which I don't want anyone pulling a bobcat up to the back of my car anyway, it's probably by hand, so I guess my question is...
Do we need to specify?
Do we need to specify, because that's how I would back into it.
Do you, do you think 4, where it says by hand, are you saying that that more or less covers 3?
Well, that's what I'm wondering. So the applicant, I mean, it is in the best interest of the applicant and the town to have everything as specific as possible to make it easy for people to, yes, exactly, to argue and enforcement, so.
My point would be, if you think 4 covers 3, then what would, what would be the harm of adding by hand in 3? It's just, it's, in some people's mind, your thought process, do you agree what I said? It may be redundant, but what's the harm?
And then if you do it there, then you would do it later on.
And the loading of materials, so.
Take it out of the column.
So would you have, so on P3, where we have loading into a customer's automobile or pickup truck may occur on any day during regular business hours, would we have, but loading must be done by hand only on a Sunday? Does that...
Do you have to do anything if you only remove the one from, from page 10?
What are you talking about?
The chart. If you take it off of the chart...
What are you going to take off the chart?
The part that was added.
Right there.
The part that was added by town council.
But if you take that piece out, you don't have to change any of it.
Well, they wanted, I mean, that was loaded, that, that was related to loading of firewood for delivery, and we do have that requirement in P3. So that's, all that does is reflect, all that does is reflect the requirement in P3, so you can't just take that out.
Why not?
Why not?
Well, because the requirement's still...
Why did he want it in there to begin with?
Because the requirement is, it's just clarifying that those are the same hours in P3.
Because you can allow it, it is allowed on Sunday.
It is not allowed on Sunday.
It is allowed on...
By hand, it's allowed on Sunday.
Okay. But we don't specifically state that it's allowed by hand on Sunday, that's what I'm trying to say.
Not in that chart, but we do in that, but we do...
We don't, we don't, no, we don't...
Well, they say, not allowed except by hand, I mean, they're wrong.
I think again, on 3, if we just, triple I, if we just put by hand, they can do it any day by hand. I mean, what we said early on was, we're just regulating the landscape business, but then we got to the point saying, in order to make this work, we really have to regulate landscape in nursery business. And this is really always nursery business, if a guy comes in, like we said early on, and he wants to grab an armful of wood.
Mike, I think, I think your suggestion is a much cleaner one, where we say loading into a customer's automobile, automobile or pickup truck by hand may occur.
Yeah, you do that any time you're open.
Yeah, perfect. And then we could...
And leave everything else alone?
Yeah, and you can leave the table alone, actually, because right there, we're just talking about noisy equipment, so. I think we're good.
Can you say that?
Yeah, so on the last sentence of 3, P3, loading into a customer's automobile or pickup truck, insert the words by hand, may occur on any day during regular business hours. Do we need to specify which, what regular business hours are? Okay, we do specify them elsewhere, so.
Right.
We're good?
I'm doing this in the clean copy.
That's fine.
So we can see the change, yeah.
Where we can see the change, yeah, absolutely. So then I think that should take care of that, if you are all in agreement, that you can load by hand. Any business out, any day?
Does that remove it from page 10?
Well, you don't need to, because you're talking about use of noisy equipment, that, that is specific to noisy equipment there, and matches the hours in P3. You're not looking convinced, Bill?
She's right.
I think it's right, yeah.
All right. All right, so then, loading and unloading of materials, which is 7A5, is that the other one that you were bringing up, Tim?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, this is loading and unloading of materials under deliveries. Sorry, it's not under deliveries, I was looking at the wrong part of the page. So this is under storage, loading, and unloading of materials. It's not talking about sales of materials, and you said the applicant was concerned as well, and this is regulating the sale of materials from the landscaping business as well as the nursery business, because they both have them. So you were concerned, or the applicant was concerned that they would not be able to... to load materials from the nursery business on the Sunday, but they've got that exemption in ten to three, so. I just want to make sure that we're clear on what the requirements are.
Yeah, well, I mean, do you mind if I?
Go right ahead.
Can I ask?
Yes, yes, you may ask.
Maggie, do you mind if I ask what your, clarify what your concerns were here?
Please come forward.
Well, as you recall, we had a lengthy discussion about Mike and his pickup truck coming to the nursery and picking up mulch, and I thought the discussion was that we are allowed to load him with a machine between 10 and three on Sunday.
Yes, you are.
So, that's why I don't understand where it says, and are not allowed on Sunday.
So, that would be for the landscape, but I, I see the confusion and we need to make sure that that's clear because in the table of the business hours, it's clear that you, the nursery, because presumably, he's buying the mulch from the nursery, can load from 10 to 3, but you're right, it is not clear in this paragraph. So, does anybody have?
So, you could add the word landscape, materials associated with landscaping business.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's exactly what I was.
And materials, materials associated with the landscaping business, so that would be loading or unloading.
Associated or sold by, I'm not sure what the right.
I'd just say loading or unloading or loading of materials associated with the landscaping business are not allowed on Sunday. So, I'll read it out, so you would have.
Have we been saying landscape, business, capital?
It's capital, yes, but it's landscaping.
Landscaping business.
I believe. Of course, when I look at the page.
So, just for clarification, mulch and soil and compost and stone and anything that I use a machine to load a drive-in customer, I can use a machine between 10 and 3.
If it is a nursery customer who is buying it themselves to, from you to take it and do their own thing, yeah.
So, I guess that's not to go back to firewood, but again, I have a drive-in firewood customer in a pickup truck who drives in one day, one Sunday for mulch, and I can take my Bobcat and load him between 10 and 3. The next Sunday, when he drives in, in the same pickup truck to pick up firewood, I cannot use the machine for 10 and 3 to load him with firewood.
That is exactly right, and it's because firewood is coming under the landscaping business as requested by the special permit, but the nursery materials are not.
Okay. So, just clarifying.
Yes.
That's a little absurd.
I have no comment on that.
Yeah.
All right, so, Tim, do you have the, no, 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 no.
That is down there.
Where are you?
Yeah, that's correct. Well, that's what I was intending.
No.
I think you changed it, though.
Okay.
Loading and unloading of materials shall take place within the landcare yard from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday to Friday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturday, and unloading and loading of materials associated with the landscaping business are not allowed on Sunday.
Okay.
You're going to have to, I'm sorry. One more time?
See where, Saturday and?
Saturday and.
Paste it in there. Paste it after the word and.
I didn't copy it, I have to, I have to retype it.
Okay. Well, you didn't copy it? You need to learn to save keystrokes. So, after and. And loading and unloading of materials associated with the landscaping business are not allowed on Sunday. Is that, are we happy that that is clear with our intent?
I would like to take and, I would put a period and make loading capitalized.
Period. Yeah, I think that makes sense. That is clear to everyone? And we're good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda for discussion comes up in, under 10 complaints. Most of the rest of those are just technical, okay, so you'll note the title has changed. There's been some renumbering. We are wanting to look at B, formal procedure. Okay, this is one of the two big things that changed after conversation with Town Council, and this particular change is where I had to make an executive decision on the zoning that I'm hoping that you will ratify under the next, this item of discussion, which is, we unfortunately are not allowed to have the Board of Appeals be the Appeal Board for a special permit that we, the planning board granted. We have to be the appeal authority for it under state law because we are the special permit granting authority. So, that means two things. One, obviously, the Board of Appeals had to be removed, it means three things. One is the Board of Appeals had to be removed from this paragraph, which is what you see here. Two, it means that we had to strike that provision out of the draft zoning, and unfortunately, there wasn't time to call a planning board meeting to do that. So, I went ahead and did that and made some other minor technical changes, and I apologize for doing it without being able to consult all of you, but timing was tight, and we can discuss it in more detail in a bit. And then, the third thing it means is that we're going to have to come up with a set of procedures for holding appeals, which we can also talk about a little bit later, but that is the big change in this paragraph.
So, Emily, just for the table and probably for the listening audience, can you just clarify? So, in Massachusetts, according to state law, the permit granting authority is also the authority that evaluates an appeal of the permit granted?
Yes.
Wow, okay.
Yeah. I had it.
I disagree with that.
I know you do, but unfortunately.
But Mr. Flynn has bollocks this section up pretty, pretty completely.
Please do not, I mean, we've had a history of personal comments coming on public tape, and I'd really like to stop that history, so you are free to disagree with whatever portion you want, but leave names out of it.
I would like to see his written opinion as to why he has made this, this particular section almost impossible to enforce. You've got the zoning board of appeals that is going to do appeals from nursery business. You've got the planning board that's going to do appeals from, from landscaping business. How's the building inspector going to know which is which?
Unfortunately, are the special.
And, and in fact, the zoning act does not say what you said it said. It says, "An appeal to the permit granting authority as the zoning ordinance or bylaw may provide." We have said in our zoning amendment that the Board of Appeals for purposes of appeals will be the permit granting authority, and that is perfectly legal. And if John doesn't think it's legal, he should put it in writing, not just tell you all it.
Well, he doesn't think it's legal. It's not in the zoning now.
It totally messes up this procedure.
Alex, we are the special permit granting authority for this permit. In order to put this under the Board of Appeals for the purposes of appeals, we would have to rewrite the entire zoning to make the Board of Appeals the special permit granting authority. That was the other, we did that.
And it would take, in two months, they would be the special permit granting authority.
No.
In two months, on February 8th, when that was passed, and maybe you say wait for the Attorney General to, to see if, whether or not they approve the amendment making the Board of Appeals the special permit granting authority, but, fine. Put the zoning in, see if town meeting will pass it, and if they do, if they do, it'll go to the Attorney General, and John can argue that he thinks it's no good.
We would have to put the entire zoning.
We would not.
We would. That is what I was told by Town Council, who's the one who's going to have to defend it in court.
I.
Not you.
I.
Not the other planning board members, Town Council.
Actually, actually, I have defended the planning board at times in court.
Well, we can talk about the, the wisdom of this later, but the way it stands now, the planning board has to be the Board of Appeals.
We can talk about the wisdom of it right now.
Fine. The planning board has to be the Board of Appeals.
Because this is, this is, this just, the procedure here, it's totally bollocked up. You've got the Board of Appeals doing all nursery appeals. You've got the planning board doing all landscaping appeals, and how do you figure out which is which?
The Board of Appeals is the special permit granting authority for the nursery. The planning board is the special permit granting authority for the special permit for the landscaping business, period.
And where you say there is an overlap of activities, who do you go to?
Well, it's going to be entertaining, isn't it?
Well, no, it isn't. You, you tell me who you go to. You're the one who says this has to be specific.
Town Council told me it had to be specific.
Well, I'm sure that he did.
Can I?
Yeah, absolutely, please.
Yeah, I'm just going to paraphrase because I can't, I'm not going to pick it up and quote it, but what Alex just read from the, the bylaw that exists, what I understood him to read was saying that the planning board would more or less decide who the appeals would go to. So, with what you're saying, John Flynn saying is the bylaw in.
The bylaw.
In effect.
Sorry, go ahead.
I don't know, I don't want to say illegal, but is the bylaw in effect is wrong? We don't have, we don't have the authority to, to name the appeals board?
We can't, no, under state law.
So, the bylaw's wrong?
No, no, under the state, so here's, we've actually got a little bit of a mess on that.
Do you understand my question? That, the bylaw, as we wrote, it said, "We have the option."
No, 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 no. So, the current existing zoning bylaw, the one that we are operating under now, makes us the special permit granting authority.
Could you read that again, Alex?
That's state law, but is that, you read 40A, right? That's state law.
Yeah, zoning, zoning.
Right. But clarify for Mike which, what you're reading.
This is.
This is section eight of chapter 40A, "An appeal to the permit granting authority as the zoning ordinance or bylaw may provide."
Right.
"May be taken by any person aggrieved by reason of his inability." And you can see that I, I solved the problem in one sentence.
Well, that's, that's not our bylaw that he just read, that's the.
That's the state law that she says doesn't allow this.
And Town, Town Council has said that because we are the special permit granting authority, we have to take the appeal as a special permit granting authority, just as the Board of Appeals, who does the special permit for the landscaping business, I mean, the nursery business, would take any appeal on that particular special permit. So, he struck, so in our zoning amendment, which we discussed last time, he struck the paragraph about us turning over our authority to the zoning board of appeals because he said, "As long as we are the special permit granting authority, we have to take any appeals." Now, in order for the Board of Appeals to take the appeals, we would have to make them the special permit granting authority for the entire special permit, which would mean A, changing the bylaw to do that, and B, it would mean that Thayer Nursery would have to reapply to the Board of Appeals for a special permit if they were made the special permit granting authority.
But in, again, through our discussions, it kind of went back and forth at the very beginning, that we were just going to, we were just going to look at landscaping.
Yes.
It became such that.
Yes.
It becomes, you know, for lack of better terms, it becomes ineffective if we do that. We have to look at the business as a whole. So, with things, I'm just going to use examples, so things where we quantified how much material they could use annually and stuff, knowing that some of that material is used for landscaping, knowing some of that material is used for nursery. We have, in effect, with this, put rules over both the landscaping and the nursery. So, in effect, if there's an appeal for the nursery, who really made the rule that's being appealed? You'd have to look at it and say, "That portion of the nursery appeal seems to fall under what the planning board looked at. That portion of the nursery appeal seems to fall under what the zoning board of appeals."
So, if, if somebody comes in and appeals the materials, they say.
So, there's three quarters. We're covering the landscape and some of the nursery.
Right. Well, we're covering what's specifically in the special permits. So, to your point about the materials. Right, but your point about the materials is a good one. So, somebody comes in and says, "Hey, Thayer is holding way more materials than they should. Sorry to put this on you guys, but just for the example." And we say, "Okay, well, our special permit covers materials." They would, because it's a provision of our special permit that, assuming obviously we grant it, that they are appealing, they come to us. If it's under one of the provisions of the special permit that the Board of Appeals has already issued, they would go to the Board of Appeals. If it's not covered by our special permit, it's covered from theirs, they go to theirs. It's covered by our special permit, they come here.
Last quick question, Brian, I mean.
Yeah, and then, Brian, yep.
What, John said that, what are the results of us going back to the Board of Appeals?
What do you mean?
What could be the downside of it?
Of the Board of Appeals?
No, no, not.
Leaving the language the way it was.
Changing the language back to where it was. What could be the downside of that?
Well, in Town Council's opinion, that's not legal to do. I understand that Alex disagrees with that, but in Town Council's opinion, the problem is, we would be asking the Board of Appeals, telling, in fact, not asking, we would be telling the Board of Appeals that they have to handle appeals to a decision that we, the planning board, made.
No, I understand that. I understand that point. It's just what the law says we can do that. If the law says we can do that, so be it.
In Town Council's opinion, the law says we cannot do that.
Has he written anything?
Brian, you know, he's not.
Is it oral, oral?
It was in the discussion we had on Tuesday.
Did you ask him to write anything?
I did not ask him to write anything.
Would you ask him to write something?
I can ask him to write something, yes. Brian first.
I have two, I have a question and a clarification. Or I have a point and then a question. The point is just on the materials, just to further the discussion, and I, I think it's probably the one area that, that there's the most crossover. We're not really enforcing materials as much as we're enforcing, we're setting the guidelines or the regulations for storage of materials.
And the quantities.
And the quantities, but that, the nursery's only tied into that in the sense that they're referring to the language where we're saying, "We cover it if there's a crossover," so.
But we also are equipped, but we've also said how much.
I understand.
You can use some of the nursery business on given days.
It's a good, so it's a good point, but I would argue that that would kick pretty much all of that to us because it's going to, it's our, it's our permit that's governing that.
These points, these points would come right off the top of the head. I mean, if given a little time, I'm sure you could find things that are going to be like, it's impossible to tell where that would fall.
Yeah, so, my question is, and my question is made with all due respect to Alex, but my question is just as far as being a planning board as a, as a group here, Mr. Attorney Flynn is our, he's our counsel, he's our attorney, so what's our obligation as a board to go, is it, is it a recommendation as his, as council, or are we obligated to follow? I'm asking a, a point board here.
Yeah, it's, it's a good point. We, the planning board, can, in fact, approve whatever we want to approve.
Okay.
Whether or not it's enforceable in court becomes a different issue.
I understand.
So, you know, we can.
But it's advice of council, it's not sort of order of council.
Yes, exactly. And that was Alex's point for a written document, yes.
Last, last point.
Yeah.
Question, I kind of just throwing it out there. To simplify it, I'm wondering if some situations won't get to the ask your father, you know, you got the wrong answer, we'll ask him up. I mean, could they simultaneously bring the appeal to both boards and see if I get a different answer from one or the other? Because it seems like it's nursery, but I think it's landscaping, but you're saying it's nursery, he says it's landscaping, but I'm not sure.
You know, I suppose anything's possible. I mean, I don't know the answer to.
They're going to have to, because to be any lawyer who doesn't know which board to go to is going to have to.
Got to vote, got to vote, right.
So, I'm not going to fight the legality of it, I'm just saying, the honest logistics of it, whether it's the planning board or the zoning board of appeals, it would almost seem best to keep it under one board because you're going to have decision after decision, you're going to say, "Well, previously, this is what we decided." So, where that kind of rectifies this next decision, whereas the zoning board, if they're looking at something and we're looking at something, we're going to have to get them involved and say, "This partially was something that you looked at at the last appeal, and how did you guys decide it, and what was your reasoning behind it so that we can make a decision going forward on, on this half?"
So, here, here's my thoughts on it, which I haven't yet given and given you Town Council. I'm not particularly happy about this. I'm not particularly happy about this. I'm not really particularly happy about having to design an appeal process among the lot of us to figure this out. I agree, it is not the clean process that we would have liked to be able to do this. But in my, and I'm not a lawyer, planner, not lawyer, but in my own reading of the law that Alex just read out, the state law, it is clear to me personally that it is referring to the special permit granting authority, which is what we are on this, has the responsibility to take appeals. I don't see, again, personally, how we can say to the Board of Appeals, hey, yeah, we did the special permit, goodbye, have fun, deal with it. Yeah, we know we're the special permit granting authority, but it's yours now. Especially as we haven't even talked to them about it. There are already some questions out there. There are clearly going to be questions that come up as this gets put into place, as it gets enforced, as questions come up here. We are doing our best to make it as tight and as clean a special permit as possible without any other issues being there. So when town council says, look, I think you've got a problem here, and when I look at the language and say, yeah, I hate to say it, but I agree, that's where we are with this.
Is there any point, I mean, again, as I've often said, I'm not a lawyer.
Yeah.
But from what I understood Alex to read a minute ago, the state law, it says, again, I'm just paraphrasing without quoting back at the state law. Yeah, we can either take it up or we can more or less decide who should take it up.
No, I don't, I do not agree with that interpretation of it.
Can we just say the language again one time? Again?
An appeal to the permit granting authority. That's pretty straightforward. And then it says, as the zoning ordinance or bylaw may provide, may be taken by any person aggrieved by reason of his inability. And admittedly, you can interpret it the way you want to interpret it, but that interpretation is just one possible interpretation. And I have made a suggestion that we go forward with the zoning that we have approved for the town meeting in the event, and simply say, this is at the end, leave his stuff in about the appeal to the Planning Board, and simply say, in the event that the first paragraph of subsection N is amended to add the following sentence. It's the sentence. The Board of Appeals shall be deemed the permit granting authority for purposes of chapter 40A, section 8. If the first paragraph of subsection N is, amends the zoning at that town meeting, then appeals from the building commissioner shall go to the Board of Appeals. And that, if it passes town meeting, the Attorney General will have to approve it. And the various interpretations of the statute, which I read, can be put forward. But if the Attorney General approves it, then we are off the hook. And the appeals are consolidated in one place. And the other, you know, problem we haven't mentioned is, when you say the Board of Appeals has to do a hands-off from this landscaping business, what is the point of giving them the power to revoke the permit? We should have had that power.
It's a good question.
Well, it was because the Board of Appeals would be acquainted with the various situation with the building inspector. But if we totally remove them from it, then it's a crazy provision.
So just so you're aware, that the zoning does require, or does allow the building commissioner to appeal to the Board of Appeals to have the special permit revoked for issues of noncompliance. That stays in the special permit because it is a provision of the zoning. So we have two different options here. The building commissioner can go directly to the Board of Appeals because that's in the special permit, or somebody else can appeal it to the Planning Board and we have to hear it. Again, I don't like this any more than you do, but this is what I've been told. Having said that, because I made the executive decision, and I will make it right depending on what the board asked me to do, the paragraph that Alex just said that we should refer to in the zoning has actually been stricken from the zoning that the Board of Selectmen approved for the warrant. If the board wants to add that back when we get to that discussion, I will go to the Board of Selectmen and ask them to reopen the warrant to put that back in. So, because that was, you know, my fault, I will make that right if that's what you decide to do. So that's not an issue.
You lost me there.
So the zoning, the zoning amendment that we're asking for the February special town meeting. If you remember, at the last meeting, we approved certain language, but Alex and I were going to go back and forth over the weekend for the two things that he wanted to add, which we did. Town council in the discussion on Tuesday said, no, you can't do that. So I had submitted the language that Alex and I agreed to in addition to what we had agreed on Thursday. This is why I'm asking your apology. In addition, town council had actually gotten me changes during our meeting, but because I don't check my phone during a Planning Board meeting, I hadn't realized that. The vast majority of them were just technical in nature. It was just this one paragraph that was not technical. So I accepted those, we went back and forth. I struck the paragraph, which means to do what Alex is wanting to do would no longer be within the scope of the article because of the executive decision that I made. If you want to rescind that decision when we get to it, I will go back to the Board of Selectmen and ask them to reopen the warrant and put it back in. So I'll make that right however I need to do it.
You're saying we're going to get to that?
We'll get to that portion, but just so you know, if you want to put the sentence in that Alex has suggested here, it means we need to change that zoning to make that happen. So just to let you know. Wait, I'm not done, Alex. So I will also say that I don't agree with this. And as you know, this special permit needs four positive votes in order to go ahead. However, if the three of you who are eligible to vote on this wish to add this sentence in here, I won't stand in the way of this being added to the special permit. There are a couple of other things I might stand in the way of, but I won't stand in the way of this because I was not able to consult with you before this happened. Yes, Brian?
So you answered your question in that direction. To be very blunt, I had the same question of Alex. I mean, it's this exact same question. Is this a fall in your sword provision?
Is this what?
Is this something that you're willing to not vote the approval?
I don't have to say what I'm going to do.
I'm not asking you to say it, I'm suggesting that I'm, I am asking you.
I'm suggesting that we discuss it. And I've, you know, I've made my point. I've made my point. If you guys want to hear these appeals, which will come in, you better have a good procedure. And it also means that we now have to hear appeals from all special permits that we've ever granted, where there is. This is not a small deal. This is a big deal. And it should not have been done orally. It should have been done with John Flynn at this meeting for questions. And he sort of issued an opinion in writing. And the chair should not have withdrawn the zoning because it could have been withdrawn at any time, at any time after, you know?
I have already apologized for that, Alex. I understand very great, yes.
But it's, you know, this is, I am really speechless. I won't discuss it any further.
Comment?
Yes.
I don't understand why anybody would vote the special permit up or down on the logistics of who will hear the appeal.
That's what I'm saying, is I'm not?
That's unreasonable and unfit.
That's what I'm saying, is I am saying that I'm not going to do that. So I will abide by whatever decision the three of you make, so.
Can I just ask a question? I realize I'm not voting, but I would like to understand. Alex, when you say the Board of Appeals should be deemed here in this proposed sentence, and when you're suggesting purposes of chapter 40A, section 8, that's that particular paragraph?
That's the appeal section. It only had, it isn't for the whole thing. It's simply for the purpose of appeals.
Okay, and then Alex, may I ask Alex?
Of course.
You've been on the board for a long time, and has this particular kind of issue come up where there's a process for appeal?
Mr. Flynn has never mentioned this before.
So we, do we have special permits which allow for appeal to the Board of Appeals right now?
We don't, we don't mention them.
They're silent.
They're silent, oh, okay.
Yes, Phil.
But I would think any special permit could be appealed, right?
Phil.
Yes. In our zoning, that did get approved, if under the landscaping business use in the first paragraph, it actually says, upon application by the building commissioner during the term or extended term of the special permit, the special permit may be revoked by the Board of Appeals after hearing.
The concern was that that only, that was specific to just the building commissioner. It did not give provision, it did not specify the procedure for anyone else.
Isn't that kind of contradictory? How does the building commissioner get to decide that I want it to go to the zoning Board of Appeals even though the law says that's not?
Right.
It is absolutely contradictory, and that is part of the problem. I agree. As I said, I don't like this any more than you do. I am being forward.
Mike, do you want to read the language? I can't, I mean, I have it right here if you want to look at it.
This is the language from?
The 40A.
The state.
40A, section 8.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind. But I think, and again, I couldn't rehash Alex's language, but I think what I understood him to say is he'd move forward with the zoning Board of Appeals only to try to amend it later, to give it back, to give it back to. He'd go with the Planning Board in the present permit only to later put out language that would amend it to redirect it to the zoning Board of Appeals.
My understanding, and Alex, I'd appreciate your clarification on this, is that he's saying to leave the language as it is here, but add this sentence. The, in the event that the first paragraph of subsection N is amended to add the following sentence, the Board of Appeals shall be deemed the permit granting authority for purposes of chapter 40A, section 8. Then appeals from the building commissioner shall be taken by the complainant to the Board of Appeals. Actually, Alex, I'm not sure on that last part. So are you saying appeals from the, so you mean the appeals from the building commissioner's ruling? So if the building commissioner says, no, there is no violation, what you're saying is that people then can appeal that to the Board of Appeals under this? Is that correct?
That's what the, if there's inaction, you can, if he says there's no violation, it's my understanding, you can't appeal that. But I could be wrong. But if he takes no action, then you can appeal that. Or if he, but I mean, this is, if the zoning doesn't get approved by the Attorney General, then this sentence would be inoperative, and we would do the appeals.
So I have no objection to leaving as it is and then adding this sentence from Alex. I have none whatsoever to that. And then I think we can discuss?
When you say leaving as is?
Leaving the Planning Board in and adding this sentence. I believe that's your proposal, is that correct, Alex?
That's my proposal. And my proposal would be that we, you know, we run this by town meeting. I mean, if it doesn't get approved, it doesn't get approved. But it is a big deal.
So this, just to clarify, this sentence is going into the special permit. We then need to discuss the zoning portion later? Yeah, I'm just?
So that's, I just want to understand, so your recommendation also, Alex, is for that to be to town meeting for February meeting?
Yeah, we see if they pass it.
And I want to continue that discussion when we get there, so.
But that would be part and parcel of this idea.
Okay, so all four, all three of you are in agreement that this sentence should go in as is? Okay, you've got that?
With Planning Board replacing ZBA.
Yes.
So as you've modified in the clean document, you're adding this sentence.
Right, at the end of section 10B.
I'm in agreement with it, with hopefully a little bit of clarification. When you say the, if the Attorney General doesn't approve it, if the Attorney General doesn't approve what, the special permit?
Well, no. This goes in, and it is inoperative unless a approved amendment to the zoning occurs. If an approved amendment to the zoning doesn't occur, it remains inoperative.
Yes, agreed.
And the Planning Board would have the appeals.
Right, that's a great solution.
Yeah, okay. All right, we're good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, we'll just let Tim do that. And then we're going to talk about access, which was the other. Oh, actually, there are two more big changes. Access and then the mitigation.
This is 10B?
This is 10B. Last sentence, just put it in as the last sentence.
Right after town clerk?
Yep. Testing your typing skills, Tim.
It's going to eat something.
On TV. Paige, are you moving to?
We'll be going to C next, access. So don't have to move very far. So it's that, and then it's a table is the last one, under 11B. So I've just got these two more.
Should we maybe put a dash after sentence? Put the sentence between dashes, Tim?
What do you think about a colon there?
A colon is good, I like colons.
But then you have to figure out what to put at the end of it. Okay, well, when we get there, we'll do it.
Let's burn that bridge when we cross it.
Are you going to put a colon after sentence? I don't suggest we get there.
I'm going to type this out.
Oh, and then we're going to go back and modify it, okay. This is, you know, writing in action, people.
This is cutting edge.
Can you imagine, having drafted the Declaration of Independence in the Constitution of the United States?
Oh, okay.
Yes, yeah, that's true.
Like quilts.
Cross that out.
At least we're not?
So that was their biggest quality, stamina.
My favorite, one of my least favorite books in high school was Bartleby the Scrivener. I prefer not to.
Those are great stories.
Well, the good news is we're not doing dry and naturally speaking, or this would be a real mess, so. And once again, while we have the opportunity, I would just like to thank Tim because typing in public under pressure is never an easy thing to do.
I think putting the whole thing in dashes, a dash before, a dash after.
Can we do an N dash instead of a double dash?
I thought it was going to do it automatically.
And you only do one dash, space, dash, space, and then you write the next word?
Oh, yeah?
Yeah?
Yeah.
So do space, write and, yep. There you go. Now you can just take K and B out, K and B out. There you go, perfect.
That's an N dash.
That's an N dash.
Which you wouldn't use in that, but whatever.
And take out the comma after A.
Do we need the quotes if we've got dashes setting it off?
I'd like the quotes.
Okay, then let's leave the quotes. All right, we're all good with this? Okay, so then the next question that came up is under access. If you remember, we had a discussion on this. It was one of the first things I took up with town council. So at any time, which was of obvious concern, has been replaced with, and I'll read the whole sentence. The applicant will allow access to the property by the building commissioner and/or his designee, who shall have the right to inspect the business activities on the property for compliance during the normal hours of operation at the sales office, and that's defined in there, as set out in paragraph 4 of our sales plan, or outside of those hours in response to a formal complaint. So this is putting a restriction. At any time is too open-ended, as we discussed at the last meeting. So any member of the public can go to a public business during business hours. So, and we have before in other parts, we've defined the sales office hours as being the business hours. And then obviously, if there is a complaint, there is activity outside of those hours, he can then access the property. I also want to stress that it is business activities. There was a concern that came up last time about personal property, but this is to inspect the business activities. Now, it was brought to my attention late this afternoon that there is a concern because there has been a request that the current building commissioner not be allowed on the property by one of the applicants. I want to have clarified on tape tonight and in writing as soon as possible that that restriction will be removed. And will we have that clarification? Okay.
You will.
Thank you. So, and you'll have that in writing for tomorrow morning?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, unless there's any other issues, we'll move on to the last big item, which is 11B, commencement of operations. Now, as you remember, I'd proposed one table that was just the most restrictive level. The applicant, Mr. Corcoran, had come back with a second table. It was interesting going over this because there was some confusion as to It was interesting going over this because there was some confusion as to what, what this table meant. So you're going to see it's a little bit repetitive. The first thing that we did is the, we had put until June 2016 for firewood sales and the snow and ice. And it was felt that in the table, that looked like we were only authorizing firewood operations and snow and ice operations through June 2016, which is obviously not what our intent was. So we've changed that so that the first paragraph, if you go up a bit, Tim?
Yep.
Under the section. At the end, it, it clarifies intact, oh, actually, June 30th should be spelled out rather than J U N. I am also not the best typist, which is why I'm not doing this on television. But this clarifies that they can begin the operations after the required mitigations been completed, continue to June 13, 30th, 2016. And then, once they've completed the remaining mitigation, which obviously they can't do until spring, then they can restart those operations. But if that remaining mitigation has not been completed, they can't restart firewood and snow and ice, which was the board's intent at this last meeting. So I just wanted to let you know that that had been clarified. There were some name changes up at the, the top. And we just specified, there was a little confusion on the table. Actually, you can scroll down now, Tim. There was a little bit of confusion as to whether or not the delivery of materials, loading and unloading operations was subject to the requirements for all remaining operations, which was the board's intent. So that was just clarified in the language of that paragraph. Now, the other thing you're going to see is, we also clarified that all remaining operations were all remaining operations in landscaping business, because this is for the landscaping business and there was confusion about what operations meant. You're going to notice that the, our, the mitigation requirements for all remaining operations is longer. And that's because we took the same requirements for firewood and repeated them. We know that this isn't going to happen, but the way it was set up, it wouldn't, it meant that if the applicant did not do the firewood, then they didn't have to do any of those for the all remaining operations. So we've just done it twice. The applicant's already stated that they're going to do the firewood, so it's not an issue, it's just to clarify it. So that was the only other change. To my knowledge, that takes care of all of the outstanding issues. You've all had a chance to read and review it. Maggie, you have a question?
Yeah, under the review of required records on page 23.
Yep.
Under 2.
Oh, yeah, Tim mentioned it, sorry, go ahead, Maggie, I'd forgotten about this.
So, as I understood, the zoning was really to control the, the activity at the nursery, at the, the property site. So it said here that we needed to provide a log clearly showing total amounts purchased, delivered, and sold. So I just want to say from the property site. Because, as we discussed, that you guys aren't really concerned about material getting directly delivered to a job site.
Yes, and Tim had mentioned that the two of you had had this conversation. So my understanding, which you guys can clarify, is that you have some materials delivered to your site that you then deliver onto customers, or if it's part of the nursery, you sell to, directly to customers. But in some cases, the materials never come onto your property, they're delivered directly to the customer. And so the idea is that we were trying to, because the planning board has control over the property, but not off-site, that the record of the materials should just be for those materials that were actually coming onto the site, being stored up on the site and taking off, and that we needed to clarify this, so. Yes, Ned?
If I could just add, I think the, the intent was to control the impact of, of, the impact of operations on the site
Right.
as it relates to a butters.
Mm-hmm.
Something coming from Taunton and going straight to another part of Milton for installation never has an impact-
Right. Right.
On, on a butters.
I agree with that.
Yep. So then, um-
How do you just, and I'm not trying to be difficult, but how do you, because everything is, the enforceability of everything is what seems to be real significant.
Yeah.
As well as the mitigating, mitigations that you're undertaking. How do you, how do you keep track of those records? How do I know, how do I know that you just don't tell the guys delivering me 1,000 extra yards to the site? Just address it to 32 Canton Ave? What we're doing is work.
I mean, that's, you can't legislate cynicism completely. I think what you have to do is, there's, there's an obligation to maintain records. The records have to, have to be maintained with respect to the volumes of materials that are delivered to the site and sold from the site. Delivery and sale ought to match up to some reasonable degree. I think there's a, you can't, I mean, I don't know how you'd legislate it, other than to say if there's a violation, then the violation, you know, it's part of the, part of the process of appeal. You know, if there's, if someone alleges a violation and they establish there's a violation, then, then the permit's in jeopardy.
Technically, too, when the, the planning, when it gets to the renewal stage, because this permit is obviously only for three years, the planning board, if there is a concern about that, can always request all, that's why the applicant has to keep all of the records. They could request all the records and go through one by one. Whether or not the then planning board in three years' time wants to do that is another matter. But they have to keep those records and show them.
All of the records being deliveries that went straight to job locations.
They would have, you have to keep a lot, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, if you, if someone, if someone alleges a violation of that provision, the applicant's gonna have to defend itself with respect to that obligation.
Right.
It's gonna have to be able to establish that in fact, materials are claimed to have been delivered to the yard as opposed to a job site, that they were in fact delivered to a job site.
So the simple answer is yes, you'll be able to provide records of all deliveries, whether they came directly to the site or to a-
Yes, I think, I think there's a question of how those records are segregated for purposes of inspection versus-
Versus the law.
responding to a complaint.
So, right, so here we're saying you need to keep a log of the materials that are coming on-site. There's an allegation, or there's a complaint, they're saying, you know, this log isn't correct. Then they would have to provide everything. But as far as keeping the log, what they're asking is that we limit, that we limit it to the log of materials on the property itself. So. So, let me just clarify where the change would be. So the sentence in 10D 2, Roman numeral 2, is "Log of materials identified in paragraph 2D, 2012, activity level. Materials and firewood clearly showing total amounts purchased, delivered, and sold." Do we want to say on the property at that point, on an annual basis throughout the term of the special permit? Does that clarify where it needs to be?
That leads to another one of my skeptical questions. The limits that we were given in 2012, are those limits that were just dealt with on-site?
Those are now the limits.
Or were there, was there material that was delivered directly to work sites?
No, the, the volumes that we provided at the start were the volumes that were delivered to the site and were sold from the site.
So in 2012, you had additional volumes going directly to someone's residence or something like that? Beyond the limits you gave us?
If you had a-
No.
If you were performing a job for, for someone-
Well, not firewood, but other materials, yes.
Yeah, so if you were performing a landscaping job in Waltham.
Correct.
And somebody, and you were buying peystone for installation as part of that.
Correct.
You would, you, you would have that, that peystone delivered in bulk from the supplier to Waltham.
Correct.
That was not included in the volumes of materials-
No.
that we provided-
Correct.
at the start.
Can you say your change again, Emily?
So it was "Log of materials identified in paragraph 2D, 2012, activity level. Materials and firewood clearly showing total amounts purchased, delivered, and sold on the property." Is that, or purchased, delivered on the property, and sold? How, how do you, how do you want to quote, Ned, I see a hand.
Just suggest something I would say. Purchased and delivered to the site.
And sold.
And sold from the site.
Purchased and delivered to the site-
To the property.
To the property, sorry, thank you. And sold from the property on an annual basis. Purchase and-
And delivered, yep.
Yep. To the property. Capitalized property.
And then those records should reasonably match up.
From, from the property.
Give it a taste for this.
So are we good with that?
And just for clarification, a log doesn't necessarily mean a book. It means just all of our paperwork.
Could be an Excel spreadsheet, as long as you can produce the invoices. I mean, we've, what we've done is we've specified what we need to see. And it's up to you to give the then planning board something that clearly shows that information. Any other comments?
Yeah, my only other comment is then under the required mitigation chart.
Yep.
There, where it says the creation of the complaint form, and this is just minor, because-
Yep.
I just, I'm wondering if that is required there.
Actually, that, I meant, I'm sorry, I meant to take that one out.
Okay.
Yeah.
Since it's not required.
So I think it's in both places. It's now that we've made it, and that was in my notes and I missed it. Now that we've made the, the applicant's complaint process a little bit more optional, remember we changed shall to may?
Yeah.
The complaint form does not need to be a required mitigation step.
This is, this is the building permits complaint form. It's, we can print out copies, you can ask them if you want. No, I mean-
Brian, do you have a?
No, sorry.
All right, so, um-
It should be struck.
Tim, if we can take that out. Maybe in both places on the table. I think actually my, just, Ned, just delete the row, yeah, should work. And then if you scroll down, actually, we need to fix that line, which we can do later.
Why, why are we getting rid of the complaint form?
Because we made it an optional process instead of a mandatory process. So since it's optional, then we shouldn't make it a required part of the mitigation, the form itself a required part of the mitigation. If you want to go back and make it a mandatory process, then we should put the complaint form back in. Yeah, all right. So if you, yeah, oh, good, I did take it out of the, okay. All right.
In essence, it's saying you, you're required to make the complaint form, which you don't have to fill out.
Right, and now we're saying you are not required to make the complaint form in order to start operations, because that is an optional process. So, Tim, if you click on firewood sales and deliveries-
Yeah.
and take out that line at the bottom line.
How?
Go to home. See where the line is, the little square box, midway through, it's yellow highlighted. Yeah, over there, click on the bottom. Yeah, click on the little arrow, go down to-
No border.
No, not no border, because then you'll get rid of, go down borders and shading. Actually, you can just click, unclick bottom border, you've got a different version of the word.
Border or top, yeah.
Yeah, right at the top, just click that. You're good, all right, cool. Okay, anything else? Any other comments? I am looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit and site plan approval for landscape business 217, 237, and 270, Hillside Street and Zero and 24 Forest Street. Oldfield Family LLC owner and Joshua Oldfield, Maggie Oldfield, and Thayer Nursery, quote, applicants, as modified this evening.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All right, do I have any further discussion from board members? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four, none, and one extension. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
May I, may I just comment in appreciation for the work that you and the board undertook? This year, there was an exhausting and enormously difficult process to undertake. Appreciate the way you did it, I appreciate the way it was handled by first Alex and then you and Emily. I think the outcome is what was intended. And I, you know, I really appreciate what, what you've done, both on behalf of the clients and on behalf of town. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
We hope to hear only good things coming from this site.
You're welcome. Good luck. You're welcome.
Thank you. Tim, thank you. We'll have to see you in the office.
This one leaves.
Does someone have a group hand?
I, I signed a group hand. All right, we'll just finish up the signatures and then I'll actually take him in a little way back.
We need another signature on that.
Brian.
In fact, there are three of them, we need his signature on.
Ah, he only signed the first one?
Yeah.
He needs your pen, that matters.
You're much taller than I am. Thank you.
Are you talking, did he, three?
The three.
Is that the fourth that's just?
Yeah, there's only two here. Is there only three?
We give one to the applicant, one to the clerk, because the applicant is going to take and get a second one when it gets recorded at the registry. She has to file an original, so she gets an original for her own file.
Okay.
And we usually have that fourth one, because we keep it, because somewhere along the line, the applicant loses one.
So, there's only three or there's four here tonight?
We only need three, but-
Oh, okay.
If that's four, we'll take four.
There's two here, that's all I'm saying.
There's two here, there's one here.
So we're missing one. If you had four. Brian, you need a couple more.
One to the clerk, one to the applicant, one we keep, that's mostly-
Five is always a minimum number to get signed.
Is that, is that true?
Yeah. And you can throw them away. Or stick them in the file.
You guys are in luck.
You're in luck, you've got a few of us of these things.
Sorry, Brian, you need one more.
If you want five, I don't want five. Which is why you get everything double sided. We're all agreeing to four?
Four.
And I have to pull them out, especially for you.
What?
They love to do double sided and they have, no, you can't do that for Alex, Alex has to single side it.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, if we, if we did a half-space in between these things, it would be useful, too.
You can't do that.
You can't do that, but you don't do it.
We can, but they don't like that, I understand that.
You can kill up a tree.
That's the fourth.
Alex? All right, Tim, if you can bring up these, the draft zoning. So we are going to move on and talk about the zoning for the February special town meeting and our plans for that. That should be helpful if I had them in front of me. And then we're going to talk about May and the fall. So, and the first thing I want to do is go through with you and discuss which changes, in more detail, which changes were made and why. So, and you should also, I believe, have a copy of this in your packet. All right, so as I said, if you remember that I had confidently stated that town council had, or the, the language I gave you was in agreement with what town council and I had discussed, which is mostly true. As I said, with everything, with respect to everything except the one item that we need to discuss in detail, all of these were technical amendments. So, it was in the first part, under section 3A8, it was just clarifying the new numbering system, because we'd had one item before and we were adding a second item. Apparently, you can't just do that automatically, you have to actually specify that one will be A and one will be B, so. The second part, so that takes care of that, and we move into 3N. And we had, in the first paragraph, so stop there for a sec now, please, Tim. You'll see where it says pursuant to subsection 3A7D or use for- where it says pursuant to subsection 3A7D or use variance issued by the Board of Appeals. In the existing purpose, we have pursuant to subsection 3AD or use varian, so we had a difference between the two of them. And in one, the use variance was tied to the subsections, and in the other, it wasn't. So I had gone one way, and the option, the idea was to make them consistent. I'd gone one way. Town Council and Lauren Galvin and I discussed the best way to go. So what we've done is, we've actually relaxed it a little bit. In one way, the use variance, so we've made it so the use variance is not tied to the subsection anymore. So at one point, it was the subsection or use variance pursuant to that subsection. And in the other place, it was use variance or subsection, so it's subsection or use variance in both now. That's all that change was, was to make them consistent. And then the last one, I think there was just a couple of typos under three. And then under five, that was the language that Alex and I agreed to after I read his email, and I think I modified like one word and sent it back, and he agreed to it. So those were all technical changes. I felt comfortable making them. I hope in that case you agree. In the case of the other part, and I again apologize, and I take full responsibility, town council was fairly specific that we would not be allowed to give this to the Board of Appeals, so I took it out. If you disagree tonight and want it back in, I will go to the Board of Selectmen and ask them to reinstate it for the warrant. So, yes, Brian?
I'd like to discuss whether we should do it as a separate warrant article to include that language. In the event that the Attorney General doesn't approve it, I think we need this particular change, so I wouldn't want to see the entire, the entire modified, all of the modified provisions stricken. And I'm not sure if that's the way the Attorney General would do it or not, but.
Making it a separate section is a good, good idea.
Okay.
In that case, the board, well, and here's a question for you. I agree that this absolutely has to go forward. And it becomes a question, do you want to put it on in February, or do you want to put it on for May at this point? Because right now, the deadlines are this close as far as getting them into the Board of Selectmen. I am content to do it for whichever meeting you want to do it for. The articles for the, for the May town meeting are due on January 14th. So the idea was our only meeting between now and the 14th is the January 5th meeting. So the idea is that we will have our public hearings on all three articles for the special town meeting on January 5th, and then we will also approve whatever articles, and we're going to talk a little bit about that tonight, we have going forward for the May town meeting on the same night, because I don't expect that we're going to have a lot for May. So we could do this as a separate one for May, and that might allow us to catch anything else that we wanted to for May, or we could do it all at once in the special town meeting. I am comfortable either way.
All right. I guess my feeling is, we know the language, we should probably try to get it through for the special town meeting.
Okay.
The likelihood of appeals is high.
It's not a likelihood.
The certainty.
The certainty of appeals.
That's the word I'm looking for.
That's fine, it's high. I think the sooner we can remedy it, the better, and have a conclusion on it one way or the other.
All right, well, and actually, that's, that does give us an out, because if the selectmen say, you know what, sorry you made that mistake, Emily, but your tough luck, then we can put it on for May, so we will still have that option to get it on there. So I will take the language that Alex proposed last time, I'll write it out as a separate article, and I will propose it to the Board of Selectmen. It should be added to our public hearing for the 5th, if we're not too late to do that. We should be.
Win it today and next week.
Win it today and next week. It is too late.
No.
Yes.
Did you put the exact language of the article in there? Into the advertisement?
I did not. But there's three articles that the public hearing is going to be for.
Put it for three articles, okay.
Well, why, this thing, it's coming out on Wednesday?
Newspaper prints Thursday, so there was an ad today, there's an ad next week. Because we're doing the 5th instead of the 7th.
Oh, right, yes.
Okay, the ad is in tomorrow, or today?
Talking about Milton Times?
Milton Times, yes.
Oh, it's in today's paper?
Yeah, two weeks, so. Well, then we would have to make it part of the article for the special town meeting, because we have three articles, but we could put it as a separate article, the Board of Selectmen won't take it.
I've seen approvals from the AG where specific objectionable provisions are stricken, but otherwise, that happens. Am I wrong about that any minute?
So they're allowed to make approval on the condition of striking particular pieces of the language? That's fine, I'm okay with that.
But of course, the, the town meeting itself would probably be asked to, we could ask them to break it down, to do it section by section.
Or we could put language in there that says if any one part is stricken, that does not invalidate the whole. I know there's specific language.
I mean, the town meeting, they said, what about this article? And they say, we don't, you know, we don't want to do the, we want the planning board to.
Yeah, that's, that's within the scope to be able to strike that, right?
It's within the scope, yes. And under that, I'm sorry, I made a decision too quickly, so. Yes, it's within their scope to strike it, so. It's also within the warrant committee's scope to strike it in their recommendation or so forth and so on, or within our own.
The warrant committee could actually.
Make the recommendation.
Make it, say, put this in as a separate.
Yeah, that's right, they could. I think let's, let's put it back just into this, and maybe warrant committee can help us.
Normally, it would be ruled, well, see, the trouble is, I took it out. It would be ruled with this, why, it would be, could be ruled outside the scope, but given it was town council who took me out, I could probably make some arguments and have them put it back in.
I'm saying, assuming that they, the Board of Selectmen allows you to open the warrant.
Yeah.
Reinstate the language, warrant committee would then, would warrant committee then have the ability to recommend breaking it into two articles?
Not breaking it into two articles. It would have to stay into one article. But if they're going to reopen it and put it back in, then we could put in the language about the severability.
Let's do that.
In with that.
Just add several different languages, that's a good idea.
All right. So I will talk to the town administrator and town council in the morning, assuming this is what you all want to do. You get a vote now, by the way, because it's no longer the special permit. If that's what you guys want to do, then that's what I will do, and we will get it fixed.
So moved?
And I'll second that.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I am voting against, because I don't agree with it, but I'm happy to do it, so. You didn't need my vote to do that. Just make sure it's on the record. The other things will come before us on the 5th. Now, for May. The only thing that's even remotely close is bed and breakfast, and that's because it's so small. However, I have no objections to waiting until October on that, or whenever. I think I've told you that at the pre-town meeting meeting, there was some discussion of not having the regularly scheduled fall town meeting in October because of the presidential election being so quickly after that. So I'm going to just refer to it as a fall town meeting, because we don't know that it's going to be in October. So, for the fall town meeting, you know, I know we want to discuss the process tonight, we also have to discuss the budget and the minutes, and I'm also conscious of the time. I think in reviewing where we were over the summer, that it would be in this board's best interest to pick one or two articles and really go into those in depth. And I am open to whichever articles the board would like to suggest for that. Yes.
Can I address bed and breakfast first?
Yes.
Because it might make the conversation easier.
Sure.
In conversations with, with, with at least one property in town, I've had specific conversations, as I think other people in the board have, with regard to getting a bed and breakfast ordinance in place for purposes of the Salt and Stall House. Pardon, I forget the address, but I think it's 703.
Seven oh four.
Seven oh four, brush over it. So I am willing, I would like to spend some time over the next, between now and our next meeting, assuming that gives me enough time to bring forward a draft for this board to consider putting forward for the May meeting. And if we don't get it in for May, then certainly we'd have the opportunity to continue to work on it for October, but I'd like to at least make an effort in response to that property and at least one other that I have in the back of my mind.
So I think you have the draft I came up with? Or you can come up with your own, or however you want to do it?
I'll use your draft as a basis, I have a bunch of other information and strategy to incorporate, to respond to some of the comments I've heard.
Okay, and I think Alex had some comments that he submitted.
We've got those.
Yeah, great. Yeah, that would be fantastic, so I have certainly no objections to that whatsoever, so. For fall, obviously, at our last town meeting, we did have some people come forward who felt very strongly about dealing with the ability of nonconforming businesses to be able to reinvest in their, in their businesses. So, you know, I think that's one option we may want to look at. Signs are still out there as an option. The large lot condos, so I don't know if you want to come up with anything tonight, Brian, I see your hand again.
Sorry. My, yes, I've got another comment. Nonconforming business, I think is something else that we can make a strong effort towards. I think from the standpoint of the warrants, I worked on, it was the one that had the most ability to continue to move that forward without large-scale conversations.
Okay.
I also have a, I think there's an interest in the, in the fact that we've heard about a potential project on Blue Hills Parkway that would qualify for that potentially.
Uh huh.
And if the zoning does not go through in the special town meeting for that project, it would be potentially be able to be caught as part of something for October that way, as this town meeting will follow subsequent to the deadline for May.
So you're thinking of the nonconforming businesses for October?
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody have any other thoughts on that?
I'm sorry, were you looking for May when you asked that?
No, 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 I was looking for October. I did, as I said, I think all the others were sufficiently long. Our recent decision on a special permit took a lot of the time that we had this fall to work on, and Bill, yeah?
Under the May one, I know that Mr. Prondek and I would like to add something on signs.
Okay.
Because we have some issues with, a specific is Fuller Village wants to put up a sign. Our zoning doesn't address putting signs up in, in.
E?
D districts.
Yep.
How do you do it? So.
So if you wanted to come up with draft language for that? Okay, great, excellent.
We will.
Okay.
But we would not bring it forward as a planning director and the building commissioner, we would prefer that it would be planning board and selectmen.
I was going to say, we should look at that jointly, yeah, if we're going to do that, and I think that's fine, I think the, yes.
Is that intended to address just that particular application, or is it intended to address signage overall?
Several signs that are, it's several signs, and some of them that are in the business district.
So it's a sign regulation for D?
Well, that's just one of them. This isn't going back far enough to give me what I need. Did you happen to print out what I sent you?
I did not, I'm sorry.
But the zoning does actually cover that. It says in a residence district, only temporary signs are allowed.
And it says in resident districts, and it lists them, double A, A, B, and C.
Okay, so that would mean the special permit presumably, or site plan approval.
So it leaves out D and E. It just didn't take it into account.
It was probably written before we had D and E and never updated, yep. So, we'll bring it forward, we'll have a look at it.
Yep.
Obviously, put it in the packet, so we, and then we'll have it as a discussion at the end of our meeting on the 5th.
It's my concern about bringing partial signage forward when others, particularly East Milton Square, as I recall, have come before us and asked us to address signage. People are going to say, why are you addressing that? And you're not addressing what we asked you to address when we came before you. That's why I asked if it's meant to be just that, or more comprehensive, because I have expressed previously that where people have come before us and asked us to address certain things, I think those are our priorities. And I think, Brian, the ones you suggested, I agree with, and I agree about signage. I just don't want us to go through and only do a piece of it, and then expect to come back and address it again a few months later. I'd rather have it addressed comprehensively, and if that meant October rather than May, that's what I would suggest.
Okay, so just to remind everybody that anything for the fall meeting will be due at the beginning of August. So we do have enough time to look at three bylaws now and narrow them down to two over the course of the spring. But I want to be sure that we're not looking at seven now and attempting to narrow them down to two before the course of the spring. So if you wanted to volunteer for signs, Cheryl, if you had that time, you've got to start.
I think that it would be good to have a discussion on these things, like.
Yeah.
You don't like bed and breakfast. I have set out some ideas, but I think that there are ideas of signs too. I mean, ideas of what do you do about temporary signs? Do you try and control political signs? Do you limit the size of things like real estate signs and their placement? Do you just throw up your hands and say, don't do it? Do you, I mean, I went out and measured signs, and I, actually Fuller Village has two signs, so I'm not sure exactly why they need another one, but maybe they do. But they do have a number of signs out there identifying their property.
Are those signs allowed by the site plan approval?
What?
Are those allowed by the site plan approval? For the special?
No, I think they just grew.
They just kind of happened?
I think.
So you have four entrances.
We're starting to have everybody talk at once. Hang on a second. I agree with Alex that we need time to discuss these, and what I was going to suggest is looking at our schedule over the next couple of months, that what we might want to do is schedule some time at the end of our other regular business to have these more general discussions. So, Bill, I sort of had you and Cheryl simultaneously, I don't know.
Well, I actually found the piece that Joe and I put together, but I'm going back to something that you said on January 5th, you only wanted the public hearing.
Public hearing and discuss, public hearing for February and discussion of zoning for Mag, those two items.
Perfect.
And due process for the fall town meeting, but I want those two definite.
Okay, that's good.
I just don't want anything other than zoning on the show.
In answer to Cheryl's question, what we're addressing is in section 3B accessory uses in residence double A, A, B, and C districts, in subsection 3C, the exceptions, and add a new paragraph in number three that would read, "Any lawful, lawfully existing business or philanthropic use may install a sign in accordance with the requirements of 3C under the business uses." And then changing in 3D, residents D, D1, D2, adding a new paragraph six, that any development permitted under this section may install signage in accordance with the requirement. So it's not just addressing one sign, it's addressing something in the business district, it's addressing the C, and it allows for resident D, even though we only have one.
So it's addressing signs within other bylaws?
Yes.
That exist?
It's allowing the sign. It's allowing the sign provisions to apply to those districts.
Yes, to those other districts.
Under those bylaws that already exist.
Yes, those laws have to be changed, but this allows them, in the meantime, to be able to get a sign.
So in essence, it's not a sign bylaw.
I guess what I would still say is, I'm fine if you want to circulate that, and we can look at it, but I think we still have to be prepared to address citizens' concerns about signage. And I don't think that will do that. It might address those, that particular couple of applications that you have in mind, but it doesn't address the concerns that we've heard, which really, so far, I think have primarily been in East Milton Business District, where it's abutting a residential district. And I, I think that if that's going to take us a little bit more time to do, then fine, but when we, if this is something intended for February, I think we need to be prepared to talk, address.
Not February, May.
Sorry, sorry.
With that much February.
We need to be prepared to address, or at least explain how we, our intent is to address it more comprehensively for October.
Well, and if we've been doing our work, by May, we will have a solid plan, and may even have draft, should even have at that point draft language that we've been circulating. So, that gives us a, and that is to your point.
Yeah, I mean, I.
At a previous meeting, where you said that you wanted to have a plan in place in February, that we could announce to town meeting, this is what we're working on, this is how we're doing it.
Right.
Which I think is an important point. Which I think is an important point.
And just in support of the nonconforming businesses also, you know, the fact that we have a citizen's petition coming forward on a nonconforming business, you know, I think is something we knew was coming. You know, I think, Brian, you raised that one, we're discussing it. So just again, if, I'd like to strongly support that we make that one a priority for fall.
We have a citizen's petition coming forward?
That's the...
There it's coming.
Those ice houses, yeah.
Oh, okay, that particular sign.
It has come forward, in fact. It is no longer coming forward.
It's being voted on.
That's my understanding, so.
What Alex said a while ago, and my understanding, what kind of hinted us in the past, and that is, we want to put these on the table and hash through them.
Yeah, I agree. I absolutely agree.
Not just...
So on our agenda for...
Not just the sign, then?
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
That's too much work.
Wow.
I mean, there's nothing wrong with an outline, but then you've got to hash through it.
So just to summarize, what I'm hearing is you're going to bring something forward for discussion on the fifth for B and B. If we're happy with it, it may go on for May. If not, it will be for the fall. You're looking at signs for the fall? Did I hear you volunteer for that? I'm sure I heard her volunteer for that. Don't you, don't you?
Well, I think I said previously that I had concerns about members drafting the language.
Yes, and that actually segues nicely into the budget discussion. So hold that thought, because we'll circle back around to it.
Okay, so just like, so just to be clear, I would be happy to start to address what there are concerns about signage and what we might want to address with it, but to do the language, which I feel is inappropriate, really. After having spent the time working on a couple articles over the summer and not seeing the language piece is difficult, and it's not necessarily our expertise individually.
Right.
Maybe some members have more experience than others. I'm more comfortable thinking about the issues, saying what our intent is, and having somebody else draft that language.
So I think as a starting point, if you wanted to take on identifying the issues and where there have been concerns, that will guide the discussion that Alex was talking, and Mike were talking about earlier.
I'm happy to do that.
I think that would be fine. I don't think at this point, I mean, you've already, for the nonconforming, you've got something to work with, but I think, again, identifying the issues and concerns for us to start, that makes sense. Mike, you hear what I'm saying?
No, I was just going to say, some things don't exist.
Right.
That need to be addressed, but something like signs, which you just said Cheryl's going to, you know, make a bullet point or whatever of the things that were critiqued by the public that they want addressed, why don't we just go to another town that has a sign?
Well, that's actually what we did.
Bring it, it just cut and paste and edit?
I did. That one that I had going forward that we decided on, that was six different towns.
I realize that, but I mean, again, bring it here to the board, and we'll hash through it.
Mike, having experience with it, doing it that way, I did the same thing. I probably looked at at least a dozen different bylaws for different towns, and it's cross-referencing, and they reference laws, and if you're not an attorney, getting all those nuances in the language is difficult, and it's not where we should be spending our time, in my opinion. I mean, it was fairly time-consuming process, and it's really better suited for us to understand what we want to accomplish and let somebody else put the technical language together.
So I have Alex first, and then I have a comment.
Well, a lot of these signed bylaws in other towns aren't really much good. And you read through them, and you realize that they eventually settled on less than they should have. I mean, that's something that I've noticed with them.
So, yeah.
But we have a number of drafts out there. We've got Emily's draft, we've got my draft.
Right.
We've got Joe McHettick's draft. I mean, it isn't for want of drafts that we're, where we are.
And that plays into my comment, which is, I think we need to take a step back and think about what we're trying to accomplish with the signed bylaw first. What exactly do we want to regulate and why? And then from that, we can then develop the language. And I think that's true of all of the things that we look at. Our real goal is the planning board is to set the policy. So I think we need to step back and say, what is it, what is it that we're trying to do? What is the problem that we're trying to respond to? And then we can move forward to who and how we're going to draft it. And Cheryl, you had come up with an idea that I think we touched on briefly on the budget before, of perhaps putting some funds in. This is going to be an override year, there will be a proposal for an override. So they're looking for a non-contingent budget, which is the term for a regular base budget, and a contingent budget, which has, if we were going to do some additional things, what would we do? There's a couple of options out there. The planning board, before we had a planning director and now an assistant town planner, we used to have money in the budget every year for consultants. There are some types of work, I mean, we've all had a taste of what our regular duties are, and then trying to work out strategic planning and drafting zoning in addition to our regular duties as planning board. There are some things that having funds for consultants could help, where we direct them to say, okay, here are our priorities in signed bylaws, go and draft it. So I think the question before us, and we do actually have to get this in quite quickly, the question before us is, do we want to put some money in for consulting work that we would then do an RFP for, once we knew it was? Maybe it's at this stage, looking at particular zoning bylaws, maybe in future, it's looking at something else. You had mentioned a downtown study for East Milton. Do you want to talk about that?
Well, that's just an area in which there's, I know that a number of properties are changing hands, and I understand from Bill that some of those properties have been held by people for a very long time. So I think there's opportunity for us to shape change instead of reacting to change, which is, I think, an opportunity we should seize. The other thing is, there's, you know, various, people come before us, and, or one reads in, whether it's letters to the editor or other media, the concerns people have about the difficulties of East Milton Square in terms of parking and traffic, which is under different jurisdiction, but if we have a study that encompasses more than just limited pockets, I think it'll address people's concerns. And, you know, that's where we have opportunity also to help with the businesses, not just in nonconforming areas, but businesses don't invest in those areas in large part because, you know, there's not really much incentive to do it. We've talked about the possibility of adding housing above. These are things that came, when I say we, I'm talking about the master plan.
Right.
So I think some of those things, you know, well, what are the impacts if you do add the housing? I think that comes out of further study. And I don't think we'd want to move forward with any new zoning in that area without some further study. I suggested East Milton Square, because I think that's where there seems to be the greatest and more urgent need, but I think the other business districts, Milton Village, which probably hasn't had itself looked at for a while, would probably be second. But, so my thought there was to take the master plan, implementation of, I think, further studies as one of the suggestions there, and let's start addressing that, because if we don't put in a request for some funding, it's going to be delayed by then.
Brian?
So just kind of following from what Cheryl was just saying. First, I'm not sure where we are on the master plan implementation committee.
I'll give an update on that in a minute, yeah.
Assuming that that's going to happen, it seems like the master plan implementation committee would be a good source of direction for the planning board as to where to direct that funding, or where to direct that council or consulting. So that would be, you know, one point, and I think that would, that would be a body that could recommend to the planning board, the, where we should be directing our attention on those points. I'm a strong supporter of having some allotment here for consulting for a couple of reasons. One is the signed bylaw. We've been told by the town to have the planning board take up further study on the signed bylaw, but we have no resources under which to do that outside of our own personal time and the time we have around this table. So, you know, I think that's one area, certainly the nonconforming bylaw, if town meeting elects to send that back to the planning board for further study, again, it's going to be the same situation as the signed bylaws. It's how do we go about doing that? How do we refine that language? So I'm fully supporting of some sort of consulting budget. I'm not really entirely sure how to come up with an amount. And I think certainly the town meeting's going to want to know that we're not going to just unfettered doing studies around the town, so I would want to tie it with perhaps a couple of exceptions for this 2000, and the balance of, or the balance of the first year that we're getting this funding, I want to tie it probably to some sort of recommendation for master plan.
So, two thoughts on that. One is for the master plan implementation committee, obviously Cheryl is our liaison, Katie Conlon is the liaison from the Board of Selectmen. We have been receiving applications. I don't think we set a date by which we should receive final applications, so maybe we should put it out there as a particular date and then take them, well, two options. Tim actually asked me this question the other day, so I wanted to throw it to you guys and see what you thought. One thing is that we could go through and recommend three, it's jointly appointed by the Board of Selectmen and the planning board for the three remaining members. So we can either go through all the applications ourselves, or I was going to suggest the other option would be to have the two appointed members, Cheryl and Katie, go through the applications and make a joint recommendation to the Board of Selectmen of three names. So I don't know, and to us, of three names. So I don't know if you have a preference on that procedure.
How many applications are we talking about here?
Sorry?
How many applications are we talking about?
I don't know how many. No, we've got more than that.
We've got like four or five.
Four or five at the moment.
We should, before the board, then.
I agree, if it's only four or five, I think it would be.
So then, yeah, I wasn't sure how many we had. So then let's set ending date of what, December 31st? Because otherwise, they're just going to keep trickling in as people think about it.
December 31st.
December 31st, and we'll put it on our agenda for the fifth to add to the zoning, appointing our recommendation to the Board of Selectmen as the final three members.
Oh, okay, December 31st is the final application.
Yeah, final, final application. No, you're going to hear New Year's Eve.
Is it going to put that on Monday again?
I would not do that.
No, we're not meeting that day.
Not New Year's Eve.
Christmas Eve?
Not New Year's Eve.
We'll have you vote by 10:00.
I did hear, I did hear about a, I think it was a planning board that is meeting the 23rd, and it's another town, and I said, wow, that just hurts.
Wow, that's right.
No last-minute Christmas shopping or holiday shopping there.
Wow.
Okay, so then the other item is on a number. So the idea would be that we would request, you know, we're going to request this. What the warrant committee does is another matter, but my suggestion would be that we request a line item that would match up with the old line item that we had for consulting services, and that we put an amount in there, and that would be our annual amount. So if we were to do a larger project than that amount, we could split it over to fiscal I was going to suggest an amount of $30,000, which would be, what, is that the amount that you had in your raise?
Exactly.
So that's pretty good, which I think over two fiscal years would be sufficient for a larger study. For one fiscal year, could do either a smaller study or could do some draft zoning and probably a public process around the draft zoning.
Is this an annual budget?
That would be an annual budget. We have had a lot on our plate, and I think we've all seen the effects of that. So, again, what the warrant committee then chooses to do with that is a whole other matter. They might bring it down to $10,000 for ongoing stuff and say, if you want a bigger planning, come back to us for, they might say, hey, we think you need more, which would be a nice thing to have happen, but I doubt it somehow. Yes, Bill.
Which, which budget are you talking about putting this into?
Putting it in the contingent budget, but as an, if it is approved as an ongoing line item. And then I think another question is also for the contingent budget, and then Cheryl, I recognize you, is do we need to ask for more in office supplies? Because I know we run pretty close to the bone. I wouldn't do it in the noncontingent, but if there's an opportunity in the contingent, or if there are other office-type things that we have not been requested in recent years. I did hear a rumor that our administrative assistants over the years have been raiding other departments for supplies, because we've run out of money, so I just pass that on, with a thank you to the unnamed other departments.
We have, in our noncontingent budget, we have $2,850. In our contingent budget, that number went up to $3,500.
Okay. And that is additional office supplies?
I did take that into account.
Okay, good, excellent.
And the rating, the rating part is not as much as rating as we do work for other departments. If we do work for other departments, the planning budget shouldn't have to take and absorb all of that hit, just because, just because our titles say planning, doesn't mean that the only thing that we do is the planning budget. So getting some stuff from other departments is fair game.
It's fair enough, and thank you for clarifying the rumor I'd heard. I appreciate that. So, yes, oh, yeah, sorry, Cheryl, I forgot.
It's just that if the free cash situation is such this year that there are opportunities for one time, are there looking for one-time opportunities?
Mm-hmm.
Then perhaps we don't have to either be annual, if we have an opportunity next year, to take free cash one-time opportunity, with the intent of adding it to an ongoing budget.
We could do both. I mean, the idea of the contingent budget is that what you're doing is you are setting an amount that will be available year after year after year. The idea of the one-time money, as you know, because Cheryl was also on the warrant committee, is for things that come up that are, maybe those larger planning studies, but you don't have a guarantee that that money is available year after year after year. I see Brian, and then I saw Alex, yep.
Well, I guess from my standpoint, for this particular year, if we are looking at potentially two or three bylaws to bring to town meeting, should we at least do a one-time drafting budget that will at least get us through those three bylaws for this year, outside of that $30,000 budget in the event that that's either not approved or dedicated to another draft?
So ask for both, one amount for one-time monies and one amount under the contingent budget. I think that's a fine idea for discussion. Alex?
The zoning bylaw.
Yes.
A year and a half ago, I did a, I put it together. I took, it's supposed to be in two volumes, I split it up, I did an index. John Flynn then said, you've got to take your index to town meeting, get it passed. We went to town meeting, got it passed. We have the index, we have the zoning split up. I've even got cross-references. And maybe, oh, before last year's annual town meeting, I talked to Susan and the town clerk, and she said, well, we, before we can do anything, we've got to proofread it. And that means my having, one of my staff members and the planning board having a staff member get together and proofread it, and then once we proofread it, we'll be set to go. But we can't do it before last year's annual town meeting. So I understood that we had a question of proofreading before this essential zoning. I mean, a developer now who wants to come to town has to call up Bill and say, what's the zoning? And Bill says, take the old zoning and I'll send you some extra pages.
Right.
And most towns have their zoning online.
Yes.
I mean, it really is counterproductive for the image of the town to have this thing drag on and on and on. I recently asked, and Susan now says that the proofreading has been deferred because Julia is doing something to the, to the bylaw, to the bylaws, which I have no idea what it is, because there was nothing but proofreading needing to be done a year ago.
So I think asking for an update, you're absolutely right. I think I've noticed various of us having the town report open to try and get the zoning. I know I'd asked over the summer, and at that time it was being worked on, so maybe an update of where we are getting a brand-new zoning with everything in there and the approved index. Where are we with that? It's an excellent question.
It is. I actually sat with, sat down to open it up the other day, and it is, it is not as easy as Alex is making it up to be, because you've taken sections and you may highlight a section and say, well, this one's now moved to the back in the appendix. It's not as easy to take and write that. We've had, Emily took a shot at it, Julia's taken a shot at it, and both are, they're not usable. They're, they're, they don't make any sense whatsoever.
Because they're mid... Because they're mid.
I took it the other day and tried to do it myself, and it took a while to figure out why it made no sense. You're, you're taking sections and you're moving them. You're, you're pointing from what, you're, you're reading old zoning, and all of a sudden, it tells you you have to go to a special appendix to find the rest of it. And it, it's a logistics nightmare.
So then, I'm thinking if we're going to be asking for some money, that maybe we should ask for some additional money to take this out of the daily duties of town staff, which are quite frankly, doing a lot already, bring it together. There are online hosting services as well, where you just load up the sections and, you know, it takes care of the organization. I use it all the time when I'm looking up a town's zoning. It'll be a, a code book or something like that, and you go up and you can pull it up section by section. So, I am thinking that this would be a good one-time money.
I agree with you on the code book stuff, but when the code book stuff is, the code book stuff, once you go with the service, you no longer have control of your.
Which is fair enough. But, my point is, we, we need perhaps some outside help to just get it done as an outside project. Alex?
I've got to say that I would like Mr. Clark to sit down with me and show me how it doesn't. Because I say, take your, those blocks, your special permit provisions, put them in the appendix.
Right.
And then, where they used to be, you say, go to appendix so-and-so. And it makes sense. And it made sense when I did it. And how it doesn't make sense now is, is a mystery to me. And saying we're going to wait until May to get a appropriation in July to start trying to get the zoning bylaws done is, I think it is shameful, what is going on here. I think that we've got to do something. I don't think that Bill is right. I think that it's ready to go. It just needs to be proofread.
All right. So, you guys are getting an assignment to have a chat and figure out what's going on. In the meantime, let me suggest that we, because the budget needs to be turned in. I got, I spoke to Amy last week. Let me suggest that we put in money for a one, a request for a one-time amount, a request for an annual amount. If you're agreeable, we'll peg them both to $30,000, and then we will work as to what we would like specifically, so that when the warrant committee says, now what are you going to do with this money? We can identify, okay, these zoning articles for this year. Hopefully, you guys will have worked out whatever is happening, but if not, we'll put it in for getting the, the zoning reorganized, and then talk about future planning and how we'd like to tie that. And I think we can, I think we can easily make an argument for both. It is clear that we have sufficient work on our plate to, to do this. But, I think that gets the amounts in, and then we can give the explanation later on. Mike?
Did you just say you were going to request $30,000 for a one-time and $30,000 annual, $60,000?
Yes. So, because we might not get both. They may say, fine, we'll give you $30,000 one-time, but we're not going to do the annual, or vice versa. I think we have an argument for both, but we are not the only department in, in the town that has an argument for lots more money.
Just one quick question on logistics. If you ask for an annual budget of $30,000, do you get $30,000 every year, whether you spent it the previous year or not?
No, they would look at it, but it would be, it would be in there as the planning board has requested this. And what, they may not agree, but they don't get a chance to agree if they don't ask. Yes. You, you.
Just to answer your quick question, Mike, if you don't spend.
It goes back to.
Excess cash. So, so you don't, we don't get 30, and then 30, it goes back into the free cash.
Yeah, we don't, we don't let it build up. Yeah.
In other words, it carries over.
It doesn't.
It does not carry over. It goes back to the town's free cash.
And that free cash is what has been becoming available the last couple of years in fairly large amounts, the last few, several years. And my experience on the warrant committee was such that because it's not recurring revenue, that the prudent thing to do was not to use it for something which is a recurrent expense. So, it's try to use it for something that's deemed to be, something that's not recurring every year. So, that's where we plugged master plan money in the past. That's where that, the source of that master plan money came from, was that, was free cash. Where that free cash came from was a lot of different places, but it could be from somebody didn't use the full amount in their budget. And the reason I, I suggested that is because, again, we don't know what the situation's going to be, and in a, and if a contingent budget didn't pass, and yet there was some free cash, we might have some opportunity, whereas we wouldn't otherwise.
Right.
And so, that's why I think it's a good idea to do it that way. The other thing I just wanted to mention about, once you get it into the recurrent budget, then when the warrant committee asks for level service budget, then you're suggesting that that's your level service. And if there's not sufficient funds for that, then you have to decide to, where to make cuts. That would be a place that that department would make the cut, and it makes sense to do it. But, there was overwhelming support at the town meeting for the master plan. There was a lot of, there were a lot of comments about, don't let it sit on the shelf. And part of implementing it is to put some resources to it. You know, it can't be the expectation that this board can take it on entirely with the other responsibilities that we have.
And in fact, once the master plan implementation committee gets started, they may come back and say, you know, the idea is that they will be coming back and saying, hey, you know, we've been looking at the master plan. We think this year, you should be doing X, Y, and Z, and these are the resources you'll need. If we put 30, let's, for the sake of the argument, we put in 30,000 now. We're granted 30,000 because we got really lucky. But, three years from now, we may only need 20. So, we can revise our budgetary request. We're not locked into that 30. Five years from now, we may need 100,000 to do some major study. And I'm obviously using very large numbers, in which case, we would request that from the, the free cash and the one-time funds, as opposed to an annual operating. So, it doesn't lock us into anything, but it gets a number on the table, and it lets the warrant committee and the town know, because we're requesting it, that we are serious in following up with these issues that we, as a volunteer board, simply do not have time to do out of our own capacity.
Remind me, who are the, the master plan implementation committee, who are they answerable to?
They are answerable to us, the Board of Selectmen, and the town meeting. They're required to make a report to town.
If they decided they needed X dollars to?
They can't request an appropriation. They can only make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen and the planning board. Those boards can separately request. The, the responsibility rests with us. They are an advisory board. But, also an advisory board that makes a report to town meeting, so that town meeting is aware of where we are and what we've all been doing, or should be doing. So, but, the policy rests with us, as always. So, I would look for a motion, if you guys are agreeable, to request in the fiscal '17 budget, a one-time item of 30,000, and a contingent item, a new line item for consulting expenses, also for $30,000.
So, moved?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? And again, we have time to revise this with the warrant committee and revise it, but it gets the budget to.
We revise it in what sense? The amount?
Yeah, we can revise the amount. We can take it out if we want to, but it gets the budget in for now, and then we continue to have discussions on this. This does not be the only discussion. I just want to make the deadline.
My only thought is, we're not, like you said, you're asking for 30,000 in two locations with the, with the hope of getting one.
No, I think we're hoping.
We could actually get two. I mean, we could, we could use.
Do we have in our minds $60,000 we need to spend next year?
Well, I think what we outlined about the zoning, I'm not sure what that dollar value is worth, but I don't think for 30, you would get that and East Milton Square study in any way, shape, or form. So, 60 might get you some, some of tackling some of that. And again, I'd have to consult to see what we would need for East Milton Square, and what the scope of that would be.
Well, we have to do the sign by law.
And the sign by law.
Yeah, the only thing that's in my mind is the consultants that we need to finalize the language on these bylaws.
Right.
I mean.
That could come under either the one-time.
When you said 30 grand, I just said 30 grand divided by 150, that gets you about $2 hours, $200 hours of consulting.
But, if we've got two zoning articles, maybe three zoning articles, redoing the zoning by law, those hours start to add up.
No, and I see that, but I just.
Again, we have the opportunity to revise it down. I just want to get a request in by the deadline, and then let's have further conversations.
I don't want to break any town budgets, the money that we don't think.
Yeah, and believe me, the warrant committee is going to be on top of that.
It's override here. I don't think anyone, yeah, I don't think we're trying to be crazy here.
We're not asking, we're not asking in the, the non-contingent budget, which is the regular budget. We are not asking to take money from any department.
Right.
We're asking if it's, if we're doing an override, we would like to put in a request for our own work.
Who's doing an override? The town? Does the budget do the override? Is it two and a half?
The town is looking to do a proposition two and a half override. So, and as I get more details about that, I'll share more details. That's all I know at the moment, is that we're, I don't know the conversations behind it, but this was a year that they were looking at. They may decide not to do it at all, in which case, our, our request disappears. There will be no contingent budget. So, but in that case, it's nice to have the requests for the one-time. I am not expecting, it would be nice, but I am not expecting that we would get both, and I strongly suspect we're not going to get 30,000.
I mean, since I've been here, we haven't worked with any type of budget like that.
Well, the master plan total between the two was 125,000.
Which was a very specific.
That was a one-time specific, exactly.
But, remember, this is implementation of the master plan, which hadn't been done since, master plan hadn't been updated since 1970s. So, we're looking at how you take that implementation forward. Are you going to rely on volunteers for a fair amount of work? Or is the town serious about implementing the master plan? And there have been people who, not just here, but in other places, have referenced the master plan. Emily and I were talking about this, that it, and that's what we want people to do. We want it not to be something that's, that's on the shelf. So, I think we take it back to town meeting and, you know, through the warrant committee, and we say that in order to, to take this now and implement it, we're going to need some resources. And then, we'll see whether the resources are available, and whether warrant committee and town meeting agrees with us. But, that's, I, I don't, I think it would be a mistake not to make the request.
Yeah. My, my concern is that the town meeting made a huge investment in the master plan, both in terms of money and in terms of town resources and the individual resources of all the people that participated. And I don't want to see it sitting on a shelf.
Are we waiting for the implementation committee to make suggestions on where we need consultants and such?
That's true, but we have to put the amount in now. This is one thing.
If we don't put it in now, we'll be waiting another year.
The implementation committee isn't even in place.
Right. But, they will be by the time we get to the public hearings on.
How long do you think it's going to take? In all seriousness, how long do you think it's going to take them before they decide that, you know, this is where we maybe need to spend some money?
Well, I think we, the planning board, can make some of those decisions ourselves. I mean, ultimately, the decision as to where to spend the money is up to us, not the implementation.
No, but I'm, just relative to the.
Yeah, right. So, I'm saying, we need, we need to be doing our work now. We already started it over the summer. Yeah.
Just, but I mean, just relative to the master plan.
Oh, I would say this spring. I mean, if we get them.
We expect the implementation committee to come up with how we need to implement it, and what further studies we need to implement.
I would expect them to.
Part of it, not the whole thing.
Yeah, parts of it, because there's a priority listing in the master plan. So, I would expect them to, their first order of business would be to look at those priority listings and say, okay, this is what we think needs to happen based on the priorities. Come to us, come to the Board of Selectmen, and let us know.
I guess to.
We're out of sync.
Throw specifics off the table.
Yes.
I just hate to see us get $60,000, which causes very probably a very small blip on an override. But, it's participating in an override for asking for money that we don't have very specific spending needs for. I mean, like I said, other than that very specific need to constitute the master plan and probably develop the budget ahead of time, we're now kind of like experimenting with what the planning board needs for annually.
I think.
And I know, I hate to experiment with such a big amount. If you experiment with 30,000, we find that next year, jeez, we spent that 30,000 halfway through the year. Maybe we need to ask for more, but I hate to ask for 60, which participates in an override for the town, where we don't have very specific.
So, just to clarify, 30 would be under the override, 30 would be one-time funds. So, 60 would not be under the override, first. Second, I absolutely appreciate your point. I 100% agree that asking for the money without specifics is a bad idea. All I'm saying is to get it in.
If it's within a budget, it's not such a bad idea, but if, if it's participating in an override, it's, it ought to have very specific intentions and very specific reasons why we need it.
I, I completely 100% agree. I see your two hands. What I'm saying is, by the time we meet, because we're collecting the budgets now, by the time we meet with the warrant committee, I think we will have those specifics. If we don't have those specifics, or if we think those specifics require less.
Don't worry.
Right, exactly. Then, we can always change the budget and say, you know what? Take it out. But, just to meet the deadline, get a sum of money in there, and then continue this conversation to figure out what.
By the time the town meeting comes around, that may be a different number.
It may be a different number. We will have specific ideas. I have never liked the idea of going out for an override without a specific number tied to it. So, Brian and Cheryl, I saw you in that order.
So, specifics, just to, just to, can I go back to what the specifics are? I think, you know, we've identified several tonight. We have three, three bylaws that we think we're going to have to look at in the next six to eight months. Breakfast zoning, signage, and then the non-conforming. So, those are three specifics. If we have to write a bylaw for each one of those, that's probably $30,000 right there. So, I'm just giving you some specifics. I don't have the bid number, but I'm giving you the specific projects. The zoning bylaws, who knows how much that costs, but it's, it's, as a planning board member, you can't get the bylaw.
Yes.
It's, I can get it if I call Bill, or if I call Tim, but I can't open my computer and get the bylaw. And that's, that's maddening for me. I can't imagine what it's like.
I don't know that that's going to cost any money relative to what Alex said.
Well, that, but that's part of the things we're going to find out between now and the time we have to formally.
And East Milton Study, I mean, that's.
But, all I'm saying, Brian, I agree with what you said about the money it costs, but if we ask for a simple $30,000, and we, we get, we've got four or five bylaws out there, and we get two completely constituted, and we get one with a consultant three quarters of the way through, we have to pick it up and finish it a little on our own, right here in public. And the next year, we find out, jeez, yeah, we crushed 30,000. Maybe we should ask for a little more. But, asking for 60,000.
Well, that's, that, I, I see where you're going, but I'm not sure you want to tie the two of them together. They're coming from two different things. And we will almost certainly not get both. Almost certainly. It's basically, it's insurance. If we don't get one, we may get the other.
I guess what I'd like to suggest is that it's a statement by the planning board that resources are needed by the planning board in order to do our job. And, you know, other departments put forth their needs. They, they say, level funded, level serviced, contingent. I can, there's all these different ways of determining it. But, what's happened, there hasn't been an override in the town, I think, in eight years. And, and what's happened is, people have tight, departments have addressed that by trying to tighten their budgets in as many places as they can. But, then, you know, you're going to get to a certain point where certain costs continue to go up. And if you're going to keep a level service in the town, then you need to look at whether you're going to have enough resources. Now, I also know there are people in town who say, you know, the growth in the town is minimal, you know, new tax, new taxes via that growth are minimal. What else can we do? I mean, I think, Brian, you hear this a lot.
That's what our objective is.
And that's what our objective is, is to help make the land get to, perhaps to more, higher and better use. If we do some of our zoning, if we look at our business districts, can they generate better income? And can, you know, can the tax base go up some? And maybe it won't be that we, we change much at all, but I can tell you taxpayers are interested in this. And they're interested to know whether we can get additional tax revenues so that the overrides don't come as often, and they don't have to be as big.
Alex, I saw your handoff, I believe?
It does appear to me that we hired Tim, who has wonderful credentials to work on the zoning.
Yep.
And the idea of bypassing him for a consultant, I mean, we can, it, it does seem to me that we have an ability and a talented individual to work on this zoning without going out to a consultant. I remember the last consultant I worked with made a shambles of state regulation. Consultants are not, are not magic. Consultants are either good, indifferent, or bad.
Like people in general, really.
In any event, I, I would like to defer the, the request. When does, it's asked to be in? In January, just because it does seem to me that I'm not, I don't think we have enough specifics. And I don't think that we have thought sufficiently about how we can use our in-house resources.
I think that's a, a fair point to bring up. Brian, I see you.
So, to that end, if we're going to defer it based on that, which I think is a very fair statement.
Yeah.
I'd like a capacity analysis from our staff, because I, I'd like to know if there's any time. Because while I agree a consultant can be good, bad, or indifferent, it does add capacity where there may not be any.
So, I wonder if it's fair.
I'm not asking for it tonight.
Okay, good. Yes, yes.
I'm asking for it before we vote, if we're deferring the vote.
So, then, our next meeting is the 5th. We obviously have the public hearing for the zoning. We have our discussion of the, what we're going to do for May. I would like to add this as the last agenda item on there. Give you guys a chance to think about it. Let's face it, a submission now the week before Christmas versus a submission the week after Christmas, or, you know, the two weeks after Christmas, is not going to make that whole much of a difference. whole much of a difference, because I don't think that many people are working on the budget at the moment at the holiday period. So unless you're wrong, Bill, or unless I'm wrong rather, Bill, I see your eyebrows go up, which, you know, but I know that final budgets are due January 31st. They were looking for them a little bit earlier because they're changing the budget process, but I can let them know that we're still talking about it. And sort of found out that there was a deadline last week, so there wasn't a whole lot of time to bring this to you.
What's the deadline?
Well, they wanted it as soon as possible. That was the deadline. But the formal deadline for budgets is January 31st. It's just that they're doing a different process this year and they wanted them earlier. Yes.
My last comment.
Yeah.
Is there any way we can, maybe Tim could investigate? This is not a time, it's hopefully not a terribly time for doing. I'm sure we've dealt with some consultants in the past.
Mm-hmm.
And I know it may sound like a far out request, but go to them and say, how long does it take to develop something like a signed budget? And they say, well, it depends on how large. Well, just give me a rough idea. Help me out a little bit.
We could ask for a range.
And if they tell you 20 hours, okay, thank you.
I can tell you it will take a lot longer than 20 hours. So, yes.
I, I just can't see where staff is going to have time to do a study of East Milton Square, which is one of the things that I've suggested I'd like funds to go towards, and I've suggested that one-time funds would be a great use for that. Whether we want to defer the part about whether we want, whether we have capacity in-house to write zoning, I think we could sufficiently say we don't have capacity in staff to do a full study of East Milton Square.
But I think we also need to have the discussion of whether or not the board wants to take on East Milton Square as a first priority.
Fair enough, fair enough.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just
We could target it as implementation of the master plan and we could figure out whether it's East Milton Square or some other portion of it, whether it's zoning for non-conforming use or whatever it is. But I would like to suggest that, think of it not necessarily as writing zoning, but as moving the master plan forward. And I think it's important that we put that into a request, whether it be this week or in two weeks or what have you, but not to think about it purely as somebody's going to sit down and, and spend 20 hours writing zoning. It's a bigger picture than that in my mind. And it's, it's about how you take these things that were identified by people who spent a fair amount of time coming to meetings, sending in their comments, how do you take that, their comments and move it forward? It's not any different than somebody coming in here and saying, look, I'm really concerned about signage and, you know, I don't see any action on it. It's like, it's the same thing, is that we're going to expect us around the table and the staff, which we've seen what it's like since I've been on this board in April. We've made some efforts at it and then it gets set aside because there's not adequate time or resources to address it. And my hope as the chair of the implementation committee is not to have that happen, where we're just sitting there and making, and using people's time and not getting things accomplished.
So I would say, excellent points. Let's talk about this on the 5th. Keep in mind, sort of, as, as you think about it in the back of your heads, because I know Christmas Day, New Year's Day, you're going to be sitting there thinking about these things. But seriously, think about what you, as a planning board member, want to accomplish with your time on the board beyond the responding to the applications that come in. And having said that, you want the minutes, don't you? So And then we're going to adjourn after we discuss the minutes.
We can, and by we, I mean you, can do the minutes however you want, but I think it would be fair to develop some sort of, because Julia is able to transcribe the minutes, a turnover, you know, so this, this meeting, the minutes will be done for next meeting for review. So I guess what I'm hearing is, and let me, I'm going to write this down while I'm doing it, so let's say meeting one, okay, occurs. At meeting two, meeting one's minutes are ready
Yes.
To be reviewed.
Actually, at meeting two, they should be approvable, which means that when planning board members get the minutes in their packets, they need to review them, and I'm including myself in this because I don't always do it myself. They need to review the minutes. They need to get their changes back to Julia as soon as possible so that when we come into the meeting, we are, we have a clean document that has everybody's comments incorporated in it. If there are comments that are contradictory, then we can identify them and deal with them. But as a practical matter, we should be able to approve our minutes the meeting after they happen, because we are way, way, way behind. But that requires a commitment on the parts of members
Yeah, as a practical matter, and in my experience, do you actually feel that that's possible?
I think it should be possible.
It takes, it takes an hour and a half to review a single set of minutes. They're so long and they are so confused sometimes to try and get them to say exactly, you know, try and remember or how to fudge it so that, because if you don't understand what's being said, you don't necessarily want to say it.
Well, I think we did some
Do we need to be in that format?
We put a limit at our discussion in May on the minutes as being about a page to, no more than two pages essentially. So that should cut down some of it.
We have recorded meetings at this point.
You still have to have written minutes.
I'm not saying we don't have written minutes, but they certainly could be less specific. If there's a need to go find specific language, you have the tape, you have
So you have to say what the vote was.
Yep, absolutely.
And not just, you know, the vote board voted on X, but what the actual vote was and the, the record of
And the fact there was a discussion.
And the fact that there was a discussion.
The board had a spirited discussion about this matter.
So we so frequently
Following which
Following which, the board thought a unanimous way to, so you have to have that.
That's fine.
Yeah, exactly. And in some cases, we could probably bring it down to a single page. It depends on how many public hearings we had that night, for example. But we could cut down. We should probably check the state statutes and find out exactly what has to be in the minutes.
Given that
And then
I'm sorry.
Yeah, and then limit them to that, because as you say, there is a recording. I mean, you generally want to know what was discussed and what the vote was.
You should maybe track the agenda and add a couple of little details.
That's how I do it usually. Mike?
I think where Tim was possibly headed, I'd say, you know, tonight's meeting, next meeting, comments in, any quick discussion? Meeting three from meeting one, they're either approved or they're going to go in as-is.
Well, no, they can't go in as-is because we could compromise the town by having minutes that were
Well, I think that'd be difficult, given what Brian said, you can go back to the tape and say, this is what was said.
But I, I think, I think you're, you're more flexible than I am, Mike, in saying, meeting one, we have the meeting. Meeting two, we received the
You've already received them in major comments.
Received the minutes, you give the comments. Meeting three, you approve those comments. I think that's more reasonable.
Well, meeting two, like you said, meeting two from meeting one, like you said, you should have a clean copy of the comments that are in.
Yeah.
Last chance to
Last chance to make any comments and then meeting three
I guess the reason why I want to bring up this process is because, you know, Alex earlier saying, you know, he would like a chance to review
Right.
The actual
So then I think
The making of the fixes.
Yeah.
So I mean, in, in order to get them approved at that second meeting, you would have to take the time to sort of go over the comments and then we'll do it up here and make sure they're in.